Yeah, well.
Okay. All right. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, per book law nineteen seventy-five, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, December twentieth at seven P. M. via Zoom webinar.
Okay.
There.
Joyce Segal?
Here.
Okay, Steve is here. I'm gonna bring him over. Wolfgang Tuchuris?
Here.
Shanju Hargani?
Here.
Vice woman, Vice Chairwoman Jessica Blatt?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
And coming over shortly, should be. Steve Togger? Yeah. Wait for him to come up.
We're waiting on him. There he is.
All right, roll call. Steve Togger?
Here.
Perfect.
Okay.
Good.
Let's begin. The first order of business is a set of minutes. Now, this is a classic set of minutes. These minutes are thirty-four pages long and constituted one of the most remarkable meetings of this board that I can remember. Uh, there were two major matters that were dealt with that night. One of them being the building on the corner of Milburn Avenue and Main Street and the other being an application for a fast food place on Morris Avenue.
Yes.
And, um, I noted that this did, this, this meeting ended. I read at eleven, excuse me, eleven thirty-six P. M. Now, I'm, I mentioned that those facts to all of you because I, as you know, I sit on the planning board as well. And the planning board actually had to cancel one of its meetings within the last sixty days for lack of an agenda. There has been only one, uh, contested matter, uh, on the planning board agendas, as I recall, over the last two or three months. So the fact that we have meetings that run until after eleven-thirty at night is an indication that this is a very, very busy board. Okay. Um, we have the set of thirty-four pages, the set of minutes of thirty-four pages of the October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting. And, uh, is there anybody here who would like to make a motion to accept these minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
Are you gonna call the roll on this, Eileen?
No, we'll just do a.
Oh, we'll do a hand.
Avoid.
So avoid, all those in favor, let's see your hands as well as saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. I, I think that's a majority.
Yes.
I see.
I wasn't, I wasn't there, so.
Okay, I see five minutes, five hands up. That's enough. Okay, so the minutes are accepted. Now, we have three, I think, memorializations. Is that correct, Rob?
That's correct.
All right, the memorializations are Rosenstein, Boydman, and Alma. And, uh, Eileen, you'll have to supply me with the, uh, addresses of these folks. I do have the memorializations handy, but it's gonna be hard for me to. So the first one we'll deal with is going to be, uh, Rosenstein.
Yeah, I, I think that's seventy-six Whitney Road.
Yes.
That's right. I remember that now. All right, is, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution in the Rosenstein case, which is calendar? Uh, if I can read my writing. Uh, thirty-eight, twenty-four, is it?
Eligible to vote are Craig Clutner, Jessica Blatt, Joseph Steinberg, Shanju Hargani.
Move adoption of calendar thirty-eight, twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second. Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Shanju Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now, the next one is Boydman, which is calendar thirty-eight, fifteen dash twenty-one. I think, I, that's thirty-one, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the address on that, Eileen?
Sixth Stewart Road, that's calendar thirty-eight, fifteen dash twenty-one. Eligible to vote are Craig, Steve Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe.
Among those named, is there someone who would make a motion to adopt the memorializing resolution that has been presented by Rob?
Move approval, calendar thirty-eight, fifteen dash twenty-one.
Second.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Tuchuris?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The last one is Alma. Calendar thirty-eight, eighteen dash twenty-one.
Eligible to vote are Craig, Wolfgang, Jessica, Joe.
I believe that one is, I, I think that's nineteen O'Kill, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I move approval of the memorializing resolution for calendar number thirty-eight, eighteen dash twenty-one.
Is there a second among those who are named?
Second.
Craig Clutner?
Yes.
Wolfgang Tuchuris?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now, I'd like to make a couple of comments, if I might. The first is that in line with my comments a minute ago about how busy this board is, there were actually eight matters listed for tonight. Two of them are being carried to January the tenth. Now, let me, for those of you who might be in the audience or on the Zoom meeting, who are here for one of those two matters, let me explain. Those two matters are being carried to this board's meeting on January ten, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. January ten, twenty-one, twenty-two. And, uh, that means that there will be no more publications in the newspapers, no more notices sent. The announcement tonight that those two matters, which are Lori Goldberg at One Cambridge Drive in Short Hills, calendar thirty-eight, nineteen dash twenty-one, is that a nine? I think so, dash twenty-one. And, uh, uh, the Zhao matter, which is fifteen Meadow Brook Road, in calendar thirty-eight, twenty-one dash twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-three dash twenty-one. That married matter, the last one, the Zhao matter, was carried from November first, two thousand twenty-one. And the Goldberg matter, Lori Goldberg matter, was carried from January eighteen. I'm sorry. I don't know when that was carried from. But in any event, the point is that those two matters are being carried to January the tenth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two. And there will be no additional notices sent or publications in the newspaper. So if you have an interest in either of those two matters, be sure to be at this board's Zoom-based meeting on January the tenth, twenty-one, twenty-two.
At two, two, twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty, I'm sorry, it's twenty-twenty-two.
Uh, just, um, Joe, a minor detail on that. Um, my packet has Zhao calendar number, uh, three-eight, three-three dash two-one, not three-eight, two-three dash two-one.
Which matter are you talking about?
Zhao.
The Zhao matter, okay. Thank you.
It is three-eight, three-three.
Three-eight, three-three, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Rob, anything more to be said on the matter?
No, they, they, thank you, Mr. Chairman, they were sufficiently carried by voice notice to, to the Zoom meeting on January tenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Now, uh, we still have six matters to deal with tonight. And I'm going to, as chair, ask for a matter of personal privilege, which means that the last ten meetings, ten minutes of tonight's meeting, that is, from, uh, the ten minutes to eleven, until eleven o'clock, and we will leave at eleven o'clock. This meeting will terminate at eleven, uh, tonight. I, I've kept you folks long enough. Out of prior meetings, like the one where Eileen David prepared the minutes that we voted on earlier tonight, that meeting didn't end until almost twenty-five minutes to eleven, to twelve. And we're, we're gonna terminate the meeting tonight at eleven o'clock sharp. And I'm gonna ask for a matter of personal privilege because there's some things that I would like to say to this board at about ten minutes to eleven. So we'll get, I hope that we can deal with all of these matters tonight. We're gonna sure heck try, but I'm not sure that we'll get all six of them done. The first matter we're gonna cap, deal with tonight is a matter that's carried all the way from September the twentieth. It's the Sidra and Grant Miller matter at sixty Stewart Road.
Now, um, yeah, I, that was, um, Dan Duvanet's matter. And, um, I don't see him on here, and I don't see his, um, the applicants either. I did send him. He just resp, I asked him if he's gonna be here.
Who is the representative?
Dan Duvanet, is there, um?
And Dan is not here?
Um, he's not here, he did respond to my texts, but, um, do you wanna just go on to the other matter?
I think we should, I think we should go on to the next.
We'll go on, and if they show up, if not, we'll just carry them.
And hope that they, that they show up. All right, the next matter we're gonna deal with is, and there was an issue on this one, Dapper Dad, uh, thirty-five Sinclair Terrace. Eileen, would you describe? I, I chose for the first time in a long time to look at the newspaper and, uh, at the ad advertisement for this particular matter that was inserted.
Which I do, just to let you know, I do that as part of my job.
You do that, okay.
I do.
And that matter, that advertisement listed two matters, two.
No, it listed only one.
That were being sought. Will you explain what happened, Eileen?
They, their notice was seeking, um, initially seeking combined side yard and, um, rebuilding coverage. Yes. Um, and then I, I brought to the attention of the attorney that since this is a corner lot, there is no technical lot, but there is no combined side yard requirement, so they're just seeking variance relief for building coverage, so that's all that's required.
All right, so that's why the newspaper showed only one matter, but the application form showed two. But only one, one variance is really being requested by the applicant. Is he, is the attorney in this case, Mr. Skolnick, are you here tonight?
Yes, I am, Chairman.
Hey, um, Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt, um, but regarding this case, calendar three-eight, three-six dash two-one, thirty-five Sinclair Terrace, Short Hills, New Jersey, I did not receive any design plans for the addition in my packet. I only received the site plan.
They were all emailed.
Oh, I'm sorry, emailed, right, okay, thank you.
Did you, or did you not get it, Steve?
Yeah, I got it on my email, yes, sorry.
I think, I think as, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Skolnick, are you prepared to, um, screen share them at any point?
Yes, uh, we, we do have a civil engineer and a planner, and the engineer's gonna talk about the elevations as well.
Okay, who else should I bring over?
We should bring over Paul Ritchie, the planner, and Mark, and Mark Jamigliano, the civil engineer.
Okay, you're on your way.
Okay, and Chairman Steinberg, I think I had one of the first Zoom hearings for this board back in May of two thousand and twenty, it seems like a very long time ago.
It was. Not as long a time as that you and I have known each other.
That is true as well, that is true as well. Chairman, if I may, with some brief introductory remarks?
Please.
Uh, thank you, members of the board, for your time. I'm representing Dapper Dad LLC, my clients Laura and David Janay are on the Zoom call. And as you mentioned, the property is thirty-five Sinclair Terrace. It's identified as block twenty-six oh four, lot six on the tax maps. And as we had in our colloquy, we just have one variance this evening for building coverage with thirteen percent permitted in the R-three zone. The current property is at twelve-point-five percent, so slightly underneath what's permitted. And the proposal would bring us to fifteen-point-four percent, so a deviation of two-point-four percent. I do note that we meet the FAR requirement and we meet all setback requirements. And we're gonna have some testimony relatively briefly. I know your agenda is, uh, is crowded, uh, from, uh, a civil engineer, Mark Jamigliano, and Paul Ritchie, our planner. We'll suggest that the proposed addition, which is gonna, uh, uh, enclose a spa, a sauna, a bath, and what we've called a lanai area, is reasonable in the context of the neighborhood, in the context of, uh, compliance with all of the other bulk requirements. Uh, we are adding some dry wells to help with drainage, and we can certainly, um, add some additional landscaping as more of a buffer. So, uh, with that, Chairman, I'd like to call, uh, Mark Jamigliano, and if he could be given, uh, screen sharing authority, that'd be helpful as well.
Mr. Chairman, do you wanna, do you wanna, uh, swear in both Mr. Jamigliano and Mr. Ritchie at the same time?
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay, yeah. Uh, do you both swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing, be the truth, whole truth, none but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, one at a time, just state your names for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Mark Jamigliano. Um, I'm from Dykstra Walker Design Group.
Uh, Paul Ritchie, R-I-C-C-I, Licensed Professional Planner, Ricky Planning LLC.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Jamigliano. Can you give us your, uh, credentials, please, in the field of civil engineering?
Uh, hi, good, good evening, everyone. Um, I am a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I earned a degree in civil engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. Been working as an engineer for over twenty-five years, licensed since two thousand eight, and I've testified in front of numerous planning and zoning boards across northern New Jersey, although I don't believe I testified in front of this one.
Is your, is your license in good standing?
Yes, it is.
In New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Are there any other questions from board members? The, the qualifications of this expert are accepted by the board.
We appreciate that. Uh, Mark, could you, uh, go over the parameters, uh, on the civil engineering side? And then, as an explanatory witness, uh, share the elevations?
Uh, sure, I'm gonna, uh, have a exhibit that I brought with me tonight that I'd like to share on my screen, if I may.
Please do.
Hey, hey, Mark, has this exhibit been provided to the board before tonight?
Uh, no, no, it has not. Uh, this is a, a new exhibit, uh, and it's titled Plot Plan Exhibit. It's dated today, twelve twenty, twenty-one, and it's a colorized version of the plan that we submitted to support the application, although it's blown up to a larger scale. Okay.
And, and, and you prepared this exhibit yourself, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we're gonna, uh, Mr. Skolnick, we're gonna mark this as a one.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as you see on your screen, uh, this is a picture of the property. Um, it's a blown-up version of the plan that we submitted, uh, to support the application. Um, you can see the lot is outlined in, uh, black, and it's basically shaded in green. There's, uh, the home that's on the property is in the center of the, the exhibit, uh, with cross hatching on it. And, um, Sinclair Terrace is located at the bottom and to the left of the, the property. Uh, the property is located at thirty-five Sinclair Terrace. Um, and, uh, it's currently developed with a two-story, single-family home. Uh, there is a, uh, paved circular driveway at the front of the property and a second driveway at the side of the property, which provides access, uh, to the garage on the side of the house. And the back of the house has a raised concrete patio area. It's a uniquely shaped lot in that it only fronts on Sinclair Terrace, but it's, uh, effectively a corner lot because of the curve of Sinclair Terrace. Uh, the property does front on a public roadway on two sides, uh, but it's not the typical shape of a corner lot, which would be rectangular or square with a main road on one side and a side street on the other. Uh, this one just has, uh, frontage on one street, and it's a large, uh, front yard setback and a long, or a large front yard and a long frontage. Uh, but the side yards taper back to a point behind the building, and it really squeezes the rear yard area. Uh, what we're proposing is to add a, an eleven-hundred-square-foot addition to the back of the, the home. It's this area shaded in, uh, orange. Uh, the addition is what the architect calls an enclosed lanai. It's basically an enclosed, uh, indoor-outdoor living space. Um, it'll contain a spa, a bathroom with a sauna, and a wet bar area. Uh, and the back of the addition, uh, which is right here where my, my cursor is, uh, has, uh, several large glass doors which can be fully opened up. Uh, so in the summertime, the doors can be opened, and it can, uh, be partially, uh, an outdoor living space, but in the colder months, it can be closed, and it can be fully indoors. Uh, because of the shape of the property, although the addition's in the back of the house, because of the shape of the property, it's along the side property line. It's required to be twenty-five feet from the side property line in the R-three zone, and, uh, it is twenty-five feet from the side property line, so it complies with the required side yard setback. Um, it's a, uh, single-story addition, and it complies with the building height requirements. Uh, there's a patio outside of the addition, which, um, uh, will have, be accessible from the, uh, the lanai or the addition area. And with the addition and the outdoor patio, we're adding about two thousand one hundred square feet of impervious coverage. Um, we're allowed up to thirty-five square feet of, uh, percent impervious coverage in the R-three zone, and we're at thirty-two-point-one percent. But, uh, although we are adding, um, uh, because we're adding additional impervious coverage, there's a potential for additional stormwater runoff from this property. So we've added two one-thousand-gallon dry wells, which are located, uh, right about here at the top of the, the property. Um, and they'll collect runoff, uh, from the increase of the impervious coverage area. They'll collect runoff from the roof of the addition and the roof of the home, uh, so there will be no, uh, increase in runoff from the property as a result of this development. Um, so as, uh, Mr. Skolnick said, we're allowed a thirteen percent building coverage in the R-three zone, and the current home is at twelve-point-five percent. Uh, with the addition will be at fifteen-point-four percent, and we do require a variance, uh, for that, uh, building coverage. But, uh, this project complies with all the other bulk, uh, coverage requirements in the R-three zone. And, uh, that's, uh, basically the, uh, the short summary of the, uh, the application. Uh, Rick, if I missed anything, please, uh.
No, and, and Mark, we could, we could certainly add some additional buffer trees. Uh, that would be reasonable.
Yeah, absolutely, there's, the, the property has, does have trees around the perimeter. There are trees between the home and the adjoining properties, but certainly we could add some additional evergreen trees to buffer the addition from the, uh, the adjoining properties.
Okay, and we're gonna have a couple pictures, uh, with our planner on that, uh, so the board can see what's actually out there. Uh, okay, Mark, if you.
Go ahead.
It, no, uh, if you're done, we could, uh, run through on an explanatory basis, since you're not the architect, but you're certainly familiar with the architectural plans.
Uh, that's correct, and I do have the architectural plans for the project here. They're, uh, they're up on the screen now.
Okay, and this is, in the, in the packet or email to the board members?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Um, this is the, the back of the home, at the top of the, the screen, that's the back of the home where the addition is located. You can see it's a, uh, single-story addition, um, and the home itself is two-story, so it's not as tall as the home. And then on the bottom, uh, two are the, uh, left and the right side elevations. Um, and, uh, on the, the top elevation, uh, in the front, uh, you can see all the doorways, the, the glass doors which open up onto the patio, which can be opened in the summertime to make this a partially open, uh, living space.
Okay, and then just, just to clarify, when it says, uh, front elevation, that's not the front of the house, that sort of?
No, that's the rear of the house, it's the front of the addition, but it is the rear of the house, you're correct.
Okay.
Are there any questions from board members of this witness?
Hey, Mark, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just a clarification point, since you have it up here, and then I'll put it back, get back up the, uh, elevation, um, to the point that Mr. Skolnick made in terms of what's the front, what's not the front. Can you just identify for the board what proposed left side and proposed right side elevation refer to?
Uh, the.
Which sides?
The, uh, the, um, the left side elevation is the, uh, left side of the, uh, the addition, uh, when you're standing in the backyard facing the addition, and the right side is, um, actually, that's, it's backwards. It's, uh, it's if you're facing the home from the front. Uh, the left side addition is on the, uh, the left side of the property, and the right side of the addition faces the right side of the property. So, um, if you're standing in the back of the, the, uh, property, uh, that right side addition would, um, open up or walk out onto the existing concrete patio. So if I switch over to my, my site plan, um, this is the, uh, the right side addition, uh, right side elevation, you're looking at this side, which would, uh, walk out onto the patio at this upper level, and the new patio down on the lower level. And then, uh, the left side addition would be the side closest to the adjoining property.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, uh, the last thing I do have, uh, is just the floor plan of the addition. You can see that the, uh, it's accessible from the interior of the home. Uh, this is just, uh, an open, uh, space. There's, uh, steps down to a spa area, and the spa area would look out through the, the back door and, uh, the glass doors. Uh, this is the sauna and the bathroom, and then, uh, the wet bars is located at that corner.
Are there any questions from the board members of this witness? Are there any questions from the board members of this witness? Next witness.
Hey, we're gonna call Paul Ritchie, our planner, for some relatively brief testimony. Mr., you were sworn in earlier. You understand you're still under oath.
Yes.
Okay, can you provide the board your professional qualifications in the field of planning?
Yes, I'm a Licensed Professional Planner since the year 2000. I'm also a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Mashes degree in City and Regional Planning, which I received from Rutgers University in 1997. I'm a planning consultant to five communities. I testify regularly in front of boards. I testified recently in front of this board on the AT&amp;T application. I've been qualified in over 200 communities throughout the state.
Chairman, I'll submit Mr. Ricky as an expert in the field of planning.
Is your license in good standing in New Jersey, Mr. Ricky?
It is.
His qualifications are accepted.
We appreciate that. Mr. Ricky, you had a chance to review the application and the neighborhood in light of the statutory criteria for the single-C variance that's necessary?
I have.
Okay, can you provide the board with the benefit of your thoughts and your conclusions on this one variance?
Sure, it may make sense to me to bring up an aerial, and I have an exhibit to share with the board. Let me make sense to bring that up now.
And Ms. Davit, would it be possible to allow Mr. Ricky to share screen option?
He should have screen option. I don't have to do anything. He should have the screen share on the bottom.
You are enabled, Mr. Ricky. There we go.
Mr. Skolnik, I'm just gonna ask that, at the conclusion of this hearing, that all exhibits that are presented by your witnesses be provided to myself and Ms. Davit?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The exhibit consists of three sheets. The first sheet is entitled Aerial Map 35 Sinclair Terrace. It shows the subject property outlined in orange. The small numbers represent the block and lots in the neighborhood. And then it's following it. It's entitled Exhibit 1, and it's just two sheets of pictures of the subject property and properties in the surrounding area. As identified in our supplemental package, we're in your R3 district, which permits single-family homes on lots that are 115 feet wide and 175 feet deep with a lot area of 29,000 square feet. We will be seeking the bulk variance under the C2 flexible criteria, where we can show that the application promotes a purpose of zoning, and the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good and impairing the intent, the purpose of your zone plan. Again, that's Section 606.2E2A. We're proposing 15.4% in comparison to 13% as previously indicated. You can see on the aerial, the site outlined in orange. It's triangular shaped. It's one of two properties on the southern side of north is facing to the left. In the R3 district, the rear lot line represents the zone boundary with the R4 district. I believe it's clear that as far as the addition, that, you know, as previously shown by the engineer, it's one-story in height. It's at the rear of the home. It will be largely obscured by the house and the existing landscaping. So as a result of that, this would not result in changing the character of the area as a result of this request. It's our opinion that the addition is reasonably sized and scaled, and would provide year-round recreation opportunities to the homeowners in comparison by way of example of an outdoor pool. There's a case that I'm sure the board members and chairman is aware of, the Lang decision, that indicated that it's reasonable for an applicant to have a backyard amenity, namely a pool. In this context, the applicant is proposing that in an indoor structure in the one-story dwelling behind the house. With this in mind, I'm aware as a planner that Melbourne is a town with tremendous character, and that the applicant tried to be sensitive to this. It's my opinion that the elevations show a tastefully designed one-story addition that will be an improvement to the neighborhood. As such, that addition is less than 18 feet tall at its tallest location. It's smaller on the ends. As such, it was designed to meet setback requirements for a 30-foot story structure, two-story structure, that requires 25 feet. I note that if an accessory structure under your zone plan were detached, it could be located as close to 12 feet. And a one-story structure could be located that's 18 feet tall or less, as close to 15 feet to the side lot line. So in terms of the placement of the structure, I believe it's been sensitive to the neighbors, and it's been designed in a manner to keep negative impacts to the neighborhood to a minimum. Regarding the requirements for the R3 district, as mentioned by our attorney, we adhere to all requirements except for the building coverage standard. As a planner, I evaluated whether this 2.4% increase would result in a substantial detriment to the zone plan, in my opinion, and I believe it would not. I believe it's important to mention that your floor area ratio requirement, floor area ratio represents the means in which communities regulate the mass and intensity of development on a lot. In this context, we adhere to this standard, that standard, but we also meet your maximum lot coverage standard. So while the applicant is slightly over in one standard, I believe it's reasonable in the context of rezoning, and specifically the fact that we don't exceed your floor area ratio requirement, we're kind of in that area where the variance, I don't want to relate to it as the minimus, but it's in an area where it's appropriate for consideration of this board. Also, when looking at the lot in its triangular shape that you can see in the exhibit, the lot better lends itself to have an amenity closer to the home, where the lot, it's at its widest and furthest removed from neighbors. Neighbors benefit this opportunity by having additional privacy. Also, the amenity being indoors provides that privacy as well. And while the applicant is seeking this departure, again, I think one of the key factors is that it will be largely unnoticedable to the community and would be mitigated through increased landscaping to the neighbors as well as the stormwater drywells proposed and indicated by the site engineer. For the reasons that I mentioned, this application advances several purposes of Missman Land use law. Purpose C provides adequate light air and open space. Purpose G provides sufficient space to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. And Purpose I, it promotes a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Regarding a negative criteria, the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good, without impairing the intent and purpose of your zone plan. Despite the variance, just under 60% of this lot will remain as open space. And again, it's my opinion that the way that the applicant is delivering this building coverage, it will be essentially unnoticedable and be mitigated through landscaping and the stormwater impacts. Regarding your zone plan, in the R3 to R6 districts, building coverage ranges at 13 to 23%. This property is on the R3, R4 boundary, what I mentioned, so lots to the north, the north is to the left on the aerial exhibit, are essentially, these are R3 lots, and lots to the right of the rear lot line are in the R4 zone. Using a geographic information system, I measured building footprints on aerials to scale. These aren't survey measurements, but when looking at the barometer of the building coverages that I'm going to discuss, it's clear that there are other properties in this neighborhood, R3, R4 district, that do exceed the building coverage requirement. I note that in the R4 district, the building coverage is 14% versus 13% in the R3 district. And on Block 2604, Lot 9, let me get my cursor over here. That's the property on Fearfield Drive, close to the rear lot line of the subject property. I calculated that coverage over 20%. With that as permissible, Lot 2604, Lot 2, that's on the opposite end of Sinclair Terrace, I calculated that around 17%. And 2604, Lot 4, I calculated that coverage around 18%. And I just did a couple random calculations of nearby properties to understand how this property compares to other properties in the immediate area. And it's clear for me, because those properties are exceeding coverages, that this would not result in a substantial detriment to the public good in this area. It would not result to a substantial departure to the character of the area as well. I just wanted to show you a few pictures as well. The subject property from the front is picture number one. Picture number two.
Sorry, Mr. Ricky, I apologize. So these photo sets on pages two and three, they're still gonna be part of A2, correct?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Picture number two, where I'm showing in the center of the photograph is the general area where the addition is proposed. You can see existing mature landscaping, and I'm gonna show an area where there's a hole where the applicant has agreed to fill additional landscaping in there to hide any view sheds onto the property. Picture number three shows the sideline closest to where the addition is proposed. You can see that it's a well-manicured lot. There's a substantial amount of landscaping between the properties today. This will remain unchanged. Going to picture four, I just show an area where some landscaping has died, and the applicant, as required by the board, would fill this in and reintroduce that landscape edge. And then this is the, picture number five is the picture from the closest adjoining property. You can see along their property, there's additional landscaping as well. Picture six is a new home being constructed across the street, and then you had to fill a couple picture spots, and so another house in the neighborhood and some open space across the street. Again, we indicated that the applicant is proposing stormwater management benefits, landscaping. And for all these reasons, we believe that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and this application meets the burden of proof for C2 variance relief.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Chairman, that concludes our presentation.
I am curious as to whether the applicant has a proposal in writing as to where additional landscaping would be placed.
We don't have something in writing. Perhaps we can work, I believe it's with the township forester, to come up with a reasonable plan. I'm sure that we can. Add some trees to fill in at a reasonable separation, perhaps 12 to 14 feet of planting.
Mr. Chairman, it may be helpful.
Yes.
It may be helpful if maybe using Mr. Jemigliano's A1 exhibit, if either Mr. Ricky or Mr. Jemigliano can identify the area on that exhibit where Mr. Ricky identified the area for supplemental landscaping and that some of the landscaping has died.
If I may say, yeah, it's essentially joined on the common property line adjacent to the rear of the adjoining home. So Block 2604, Lot 5, there's a small gap adjacent to the rear of that home, right there, if that helps.
Can you just bring that picture up again, Paul? The picture of the gap or the picture of the?
Yeah, I think, Rick, I think it'd be more beneficial to the board and the public if Mark brings up his picture, and maybe Mr. Ricky can identify where on that A1 he's talking.
So I think it's in this area where the additional landscaping could be added.
So the record is clear, it would be the area to the left of the proposed drywells adjoining the closest residential property to the north.
That's correct. That's correct, to the south and southwest of the new addition.
Thank you.
Do I understand that the proposal is to sit down with the town forester and come up with a plan in that area for additional plantings?
That would certainly be a reasonable condition of approval, in our view, Chairman.
Are there any other board members who have questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, we should open up this to the public for questions of Mr. Jemigliano and Mr. Ricky.
I'm gonna do that right now. Is there anyone in the public who has questions for either of the witnesses for the applicant? Is there anyone in the public? There are no hands. Is there anyone in the public who has a comment here she would like to make with respect to this application? Any hands, Eileen?
No.
Board members, I'd be interested in hearing your views on this matter.
I'll go. I agree with Mr. Ricky that this application for variance relief, as it pertains to lot coverage, could be granted under C2 variance. There is no detriment to the zoning plan or public good. With the added proposed landscaping and the minimal fenestration facing the neighbors to the southwest of this addition, I do not feel it would be detrimental to their property. So I would support this application.
Is there anyone else on the board who has a comment, if you would like to make with respect to this matter?
I just want to say that I also could support this application. I think actually the addition of the one-story mass would actually probably help the mass of the building and scale it down. So I think it's a good proposal. I agree with all of my fellow board members for the same reasons. And I'll make a motion to approve the granting of this.
With that condition with respect to the additional landscape?
Yes.
Second.
Second motion?
I did, Jessica.
Ray Plutner?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Will Sanket Torres?
Yes.
John Drew Horsani?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much, board members. Please have a safe and healthy new year, and we hope to see you in person next year. Hope to. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Happy, healthy holiday. Thanks.
All right, can we find out now if the Miller matter is ready to be presented?
He has asked that we adjourn the matter. So I told him to adjourn it till the January 10th meeting.
So the Miller matter, that's the second matter listed on the agenda for tonight. This matter is calendar 3821-21. 60 Stewart Road is being carried again, and everything that I said earlier with respect to the fact that there will be no additional advertising or notices sent with respect to this matter. Everything I said previously will carry with regard to this matter as well. So if there's anyone here on the 60 Stewart Road matter, Sidra and Grant Miller, I'm suggesting that you should show up on the meeting at this board's meeting on January 10 in the same format that we're using tonight. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to to have meetings in person, at least not right away, it looks like. But the township has not. But there's, the township has not informed anyone on this board or the board secretary that we're doing any in-person meetings. So this will be once again uh on and uh same basis as the meeting tonight on the Zoom platform. All right, we're going to move now to the next matter on the agenda, which I think is Praveen Kandula at forty four Canoe Brook Road, which is calendar thirty eight thirty seven dash twenty one. Is there anyone who's ready to present on that matter?
Hello, yes, I'm here, Doug Miller. And uh my clients, Praveen and Sweta are also in attendance.
Okay, why don't we just raise whoever's gonna testify, raise your right hands, please. Do you, do you swear from the testimony about to give in today's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you just state your names to the record, please, one at a time.
Douglas Miller from A H M Architects, uh two eighty one Main Street, Melbourne, New Jersey.
Praveen Kandula, forty four Canoe Brook Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Sweta Kandula, forty four Canoe Brook Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
And who's gonna present first for the applicant?
Uh my clients are going to just uh say a few brief words and then I'll uh make the presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, uh respected chairman and members of the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to introduce ourselves. My name is Praveen Kandula, this is my wife Sweta Kandula. We live at forty four Canoe Brook, as mentioned, with our kids, Arnav and Charvi, who are ten. Um I'm a transplant physician practicing at St. Bonobus, and my wife's a dermatologist practicing in Parsipanim. We have been in town for um almost eight years now, and we moved when our kids were two, who have, I believe, gone to uh South Mountain Elementary School, Christ Church Nursery School, and are now going to graduate from Hartshawn School. And I can't believe that it's been already eight years and they're grown enough now to be volunteering in the community by themselves as do we. Um as we have grown with them, I it's it's been an amazing experience and we are proud to call Short Hills, Melbourne, our uh our town. They have also very, very big cash to this place and this our own neighborhood and house. Uh unfortunately, as they're growing up, our needs have also grown. Uh our parents have moved in and they can't take the stairs. My kids, as usual, are fighting for their own en suite bathrooms, and the house is getting older, which has forced us to take us the next step and see if we can either renovate or move. Uh we even looked around to see if we can rather move to a newer establishment that would meet the needs. But our kids immediately revolted as they have many friends in the neighborhood. We ourselves have our own friends in the immediate neighborhood where we can walk and be close by. As such, we uh we feel that having to uh completely redo the house would be best suited to our needs. We have worked with Mr. Doug Miller for the last year to try as conscientiously as possible to come up with the with the plan that would be most needing, meeting our needs. So I'll let Mr. Miller actually uh explain the details. And if Sweta, if you want to say something, please go ahead.
No, and uh you know, again, as Praveen and Code, like, you know, we uh we are very proud to call uh this town as our home and uh we um our our kids are part of like the scout numbers and like they volunteered in town. Um so as we and uh we, you know, we just wanted to um, you know, present our plans to you. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to validate me as an expert?
Yes.
Please.
You need to do that.
Have your qualifications.
Sure, uh my name's Douglas Miller, uh been practicing architecture since nineteen ninety five. Uh I'm licensed in New Jersey, my license is in good standing. I've made numerous presentations to this board as well as uh a number of the boards in the surrounding community.
And your license is in good standing.
It is.
Thank you.
Correct.
And and Mr. Miller, tonight, you're you're testifying as the professional architect on the project.
I am, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you. Um yeah, as my client said, um you know, they've lived in this house for eight years. It's a split level home. And just looking at what their goals were, it was just a challenge to renovate and alter the house. You know, we looked at that as the initial goal, but after much research, we we felt that there was too many shortcomings to overcome. Uh if I share my screen, I can kind of walk you through the plans and explain the project.
Please do.
Okay, so these are the drawings, these are the same drawings that you have before you. Uh here is the site plan. Uh let me zoom in a little. Our lot is in the R five zone. Um and you know, the odd thing about this property is it's a pie-shaped lot, um which is unusual and presents a a number of zoning hardships. Uh the wider part of the pie you can see is on Canoe Brook Road with the narrower part of the spice uh in the backyard. Um our lot is uh hundred and thirty seven point four three feet wide, where only seventy five feet is required. We're asking for three uh C variances, one for front yard setback, uh the other for side yard combined, and one what's called um a location of parking, which is basically um for this backup area here outside the driveway. And this is just so my client doesn't have to back out a hundred and ten feet to the to the street. Uh let me kind of take you through the plans and and the and the existing uh regulate uh zoning analysis. The uh you can see here, the existing house has a number of existing non-conformities. There's an existing non-conforming front yard. There's existing non-conforming side yard combined, and there's a existing non-conforming rear yard unoccupied, which is fairly common for these pie-shaped lots because the house gets pushed back so much and you have so much area in the front yard that you have very little rear yard space. So uh these are the floor plans. We try to create a more modern, open concept. And we have a two-car garage at the front, a guest bedroom, uh you know, en suite with a bath, a mudroom, open concept across the rear, we have the kitchen, heating and family room space, and then a a living room uh right off of the foyer, staircase is located on the side. And on the uh we have a deck out in the rear. On the second floor, we have uh four bedrooms, master suite across the back, um three bedrooms across the front, as well as laundry space. And then up on the roof, we have a proposed roof deck. Um the elevations, you can see the house is more modern in style. We try to keep it low, slow. Um and this is the front elevation, uh rear elevation and uh and the two sides. Actually have a another exhibit um that I'd like to introduce, I guess we could call that A one. And uh that's here, I can mark it and I'll submit a copy to Eileen. Um so I'm showing this, so we can see this is kind of a rendering of the house. A lot of times with modern styled architecture, a two-dimensional drawing doesn't really represent what the house truly looks like. So I wanted to put this uh image together. This is a kind of a three D representation kind of placed on the existing property.
We said, Doug, Doug, we don't see anything other than what you showed by way of.
Sorry. Let's see here. How about now?
Yeah, so 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 before, before we go ahead, this is just a one-page sheet that's A one?
It's a one uh page sheet. I labeled it P one, but I guess we could label it as exhibit A.
Let's call, let's call it A one, please.
A one, okay.
All right, and and can you just describe to set a foundation for what we're looking at?
Sure.
Your testimony.
Yeah, so if we go kind of clockwise around the page, um the upper left corner, I have uh four photographs that I took myself recently. Uh one looking at forty Canoe Brook Road, uh one looking from the front of the house towards fifty Canoe Brook, which is the house on the right. And then the same, but from the backyard, looking uh to each neighbor. Um going around, this is a rendering that I put together. It's a three D representation of the house um to give you a better idea of what the house will look like. And inside is a small picture of the existing home. Um you know, existing dated split from the early sixties. And then I have two aerial photos that I took from uh Google Earth um overlaid with the uh engineer's established setback um drawing, which is on the left, and then a drawing which I put together, which shows the proposed home. And what I'm calling uh uh kind of proposed or or perceived setbacks. And that's what uh the sheet is made up of, these um these photographs.
Mr. Miller, just a couple of things. First of all, you're gonna, you know, at the end of this proceeding, you're gonna submit any exhibits to Ms. David that you uh are introducing. Um do you, do you have any, can you just maybe zoom in on the bottom aerial views? Because they're just hard to see.
Yeah, I'll definitely zoom in on them.
Okay.
As as I talk about them.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you, that's all, that's good, yeah.
This is an aerial view. The yellow lines are um the site lines uh the site property lines. And there's some uh uh just representing uh the setbacks from the front property line. And this red dash line, that's kind of hard to see, is the established setback line. So this is the established setback line. And then the, I'll scroll across to the picture on the right. The yellow is the proposed home and driveway. And these red lines are what I'm kind of calling perceived setbacks, and I'll get into that and explain what those are. Uh so it'll make a little bit more sense later on, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay, so um as I was stating earlier, and I wanted to put this schematic rendering together here, just to show, you know, the house in context, you know, uh modern houses, you know, in two-dimensional drawings, just the kind of plain and boxy. So I wanted to represent the materiality um and how the the facade is actually more enlivened by um, you know, in three dimensions. So let me kind of go back to the plans and I can kind of take you through uh the plans and the variances that we're requesting. Everybody see the uh the drawings again? So like I was saying before, our lot is is pie-shaped. And you know, having the hardship of the unusually shaped lot with a lot that's nearly twice um the width uh that's required for the zone um left us with, you know, kind of few options uh as far as how to design this house without bearing the variance relief. And in fact, that the existing house has a greater degree of deviation from the requirements of the zoning ordinance than the house that we're proposing here. So, you know, even though we are asking for variance relief, we're improving the house from a zoning perspective. A lot being so wide, the issue is that the way the ordinance is read is that the lot width is measured at the forty-foot uh minimum required setback. So instead of the established setback line where the house has to be placed, which is sixty six point two six. And the issue is, as the, as you get further away from the street, the lot gets substantially narrower. So your side yard combines become an issue because the side yard combined is based as if you're only forty feet from the street. And on a rectangular lot, that's not really an issue because, you know, at forty feet, sixty feet, a hundred feet, whatever the depth of the property is, if the both slot lines are parallel, then, you know, your side yard combined would be the same. In this case, by having the lot narrow so much, presented a problem. So as I stated earlier, the existing house has a rear unoccupied um deviation. And we were looking at it and said, if we pushed our house back and with a conforming front yard setback, we would uh be asking for a rear yard unoccupied variance. And in this instance, I think by pulling the house forward would have less of an impact on the neighborhood than pushing the house back, because I think having the house setback so far from the house would um block the light air and open space. So, you know, keeping the house forward preserves that, which I think is a benefit to all the surrounding houses. So when I was designing this house, I took the approach of saying, you know, what is the standard rectangular lot on the street? Uh and the most common lot width was a hundred and ten feet. So I said, well, let's assume we have a hundred and ten foot wide lot and design a house with setbacks that would be conforming to that. So um the existing house has twelve point seven seven side yard setbacks and twenty two point six six. We're proposing sixteen point five and twenty two point six five. So basically, we're having uh set side yard setbacks that are greater to or equal to the existing. And both these setbacks, I want to note, are conforming from a side yard perspective. It's only the side yard combined, that's the the zoning issue. Existing home has a side yard setback combined of thirty five point four three or forty eight point one zero is required. And we're proposing to increase that by three point seven two feet to thirty nine point one five, therefore improving the side yard combined by increasing it by that three point seven two feet I just mentioned. And so these side yard combines would be greater than what would be needed for, I say, the standard hundred and ten foot wide lot. And I'd like to note that our house from the neighbor um to the left is uh seventy eight feet. Uh the houses are seventy eight feet apart, so we're not going to be blocking any light air and open space on that side. And on the other side, I were about thirty five feet from fifty Canoe Brook, which is to the right. The other variance is the existing non-conforming front uh yard setback. The existing non-conforming is sixty two point four three, where sixty six point two eight is required. And uh let me go to that other exhibit um with the kind of schematic aerials, and maybe that will kind of explain things a little. So if we go down to this drawing here, we're now looking again at A one. A one, correct. So the yellow lines, like I stated just previously, this is the front yard um property lines for all the the lots. And there's kind of a jog in the road that actually bends again here. So and then, you know, when you look, start looking at all these uh front yard setbacks, there's very little consistency between the houses. You can see how they kind of go in and out. Um so there isn't that typical street wall that you have when the road is perpendicular to the lot and all the houses kind of line up in a row. So by having this zigzag, um there is no perceived street wall. And, you know, the setbacks vary from almost twenty eight feet from the closest to the farthest, just in this small sampling of houses that we had here to create the number for the established setback. And these uh setback lines were created by uh Casey and Keller, uh the engineer that was working with us on the property. And because our house is located here between this bend and this bend, um you kind of get to what I what I call um, you know, the perceived setback. If you're looking at, you know, say, the front corner of this house over to, say, the the house uh immediately to our right, the left and and this um aerial shot and the other houses. Now, you can see we're we're back behind both those lines. So, you know, that that street wall that the zoning ordinance is really trying to preserve or that consistency isn't really here. And our house is actually kind of behind what that perceived uh front yard setback is, even though we are asking for a front yard setback variance. And then, you know, if we go up to these pictures that I took, um this is looking from our, the existing house's front yard towards forty Canoe Brook. And that house has a much greater front yard setback than ours, but looking at it and the way that the street is curved, you would think that that house is closer to the street than ours. Now, when you look to the house on the other side at fifty Canoe Brook, that house is actually closer to the street than us, but it looks like it's further back because you can't really see it from this view. So, you know, in this case, the front yard setback and the established um doesn't really kind of work as being something applicable. You know, I think we should really think about it, how the street wall is perceived. And, you know, looking at that other drawing that I just showed, you know, it kind of shows that, you know, we would be perceived behind or in line with that um established setback, even though the numbers tell a different story. So we basically pulled the house four point five feet forward from what the established setback um is 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 uh asking for. is 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 asking for. And it's important to note that it's only a small triangle of the front of the house and a one story triangle of the front of the garage. Because if we go back to the drawings, sorry, I have to keep canceling it. I don't know why my share blocks out when I go from one drawing to the next. But so if I zoom in here. You can see this is the required front yard established setback line. So it's this tiny triangle of the one story portion of the garage. And this triangle of the front corner of the house, that's in violation. The rest of the house is, you know, all conforming from all the other requirements. And the last variance that I want to talk about is the what's called location of parking. And as stated previously, it's for the this turnaround area. So they can back out of the garage, do a K turn and then drive towards the street. The distance from the garage door to the street line is about a hundred and ten feet. So, you know, the way that this ordinance reads, I don't think that, you know, we would really specifically be in violation. Because the way it reads, it says that parking spaces for residential units may be located in any side or rear yard. And parking shall be permitted on a driveway in a front yard, but prohibited elsewhere in the front yard, except for temporary construction purposes. And, you know, having a turnaround area, I don't think it's necessarily like a parking area. I think this ordinance may be, you know, if you don't have a garage, they don't want to create parking in the front yard. And that's not what we're trying to to show here. And if I go back to the aerial photo. You can see that a number of the houses have circular driveways. There's a circular driveway here, a circular driveway here, a circular driveway here. You know, the house immediately to our left or the right in this picture has a big turnaround area kind of in the front of their garage, just like we're proposing, probably actually larger an area. So I think what we're asking for here isn't really inconsistent with the neighborhood. And in fact, the circular driveway, even though it creates a lot more front yard imperious previous coverage is permitted. So we took the approach of saying, well, we could do a big circular drive. But I think that heats up a lot of the green space in the front yard that, you know, people like to see when they drive down a residential neighborhood. So providing just a small parking backup area in the front yard keeps more green space and, you know, creates a more attractive appearance from the street. And minimizes the impervious coverage on the property. So and the last thing is backing up that far from a house can be dangerous. I think it's a safety issue, you know, backing up over a hundred feet. You know, can be risky. And if kids are playing and anything else, you might not see them. So, you know, by having a turnaround space up to the garage, I think improves the safety on the lot. And, you know, just overall, if it wasn't for this pie shaped lot, you know, our house would be conforming. Our house is smaller than required for all aspects of the zone. You know, it's smaller than required for FAR. It's also small, smaller on lawn coverage. It's smaller on building coverage and it's also smaller than permitted for the front yard coverage. So we're trying to design a house here that's sensitive in scale. I mean, some of the other houses on the street are just massive, maximized, you know, every possible impervious surface, you know, they have pools, circular driveways. So we're trying to be sensitive. We're trying to preserve as much green space and light air as open space as possible. So we're just basically designing a house here that meets my client's needs without trying to go over the top. So I think that, you know, the the degree of variance relief we're asking for will not have a meaning meaningful impact on the overhaul bulk of the house. I think what we're asking for is consistent with the master plan. I think it creates a functional home while improving the housing stock. And, you know, we're bringing existing nonconforming house more into conformity, which I think is benefit to the community as a whole. So I think what we're proposing, the benefits outweigh the detriments. And I don't think what we're asking for here is going to hurt the neighborhood or the intent of the master plan. So I could open it up to the to anybody that has any questions.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the board members if they have any questions of this witness. Yes.
In your site plan, Mr. Miller, you show a car parked in the side yard setback. Can you explain that?
Yeah, there's a little area so that it's someone can pull their car forward if you know, they had a visitor and somebody had to get out of the garage. And that way people could come forward and park in the driveway without having parked in the street and walking so far to the house.
How far is that from this property line?
Yeah, about. So it has a required buffer as required in town for a driveway.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Could you tell me a little bit more about the rooftop deck?
Yeah, it'll be a rooftop deck accessed from the main staircase. Let me go back to the the plans. So the rooftop deck is that the kind of back half of the the roof of the home? So it's access from this stairway. We don't have a full stair tower that comes up above the roof line. We're actually trying to keep it low slum. And we're going to have kind of like a skylight doorway that opens up to allow you to walk out onto the the roof deck. And we have, this is the kind of vaulted family rooms foyer space. And we're using kind of a small area on the roof for the HVAC equipment. So it's in the back half of the lot. And the reason why we're creating a roof deck is because our backyard is so tiny. I mean, if you look at all the neighboring properties, their yards are are just massive. Just because, you know, we're unfortunately located kind of on the inside of a bend. So the houses adjacent to us have larger lots. So they wanted to have a little bit more outdoor space that they could use for for their use.
What would what would be a use for a deck like this being thirty feet up in the air?
Just entertaining space or relaxing space, you know, private space for the family, you know, we kind of back up to all these other yards, they have pools and and other features. So the clients wanted, you know, some place that they could get away and have some privacy.
Would the neighbors have the same privacy?
I would think so, because the house to our left is up higher than our house, although that we will be over.
It'd be thirty plus feet up in the air, though.
Right, our lot is less than thirty feet, but there's also some, you know, evergreen screening between the two properties.
Mr. Miller, are you familiar with the fact that the township committee tomorrow night will be dealing with the issue of prohibition of of those facilities like rooftop decks anywhere in the residential district in Milburn Township?
I am, yes. But, you know, my understanding was that they were the primary focus was to avoid rooftop decks and multifamily and commercial zones. And that there's been consideration to remove the limitation for the residential district. So that's what I've heard from, you know, other people that have discussed the matter. And I don't think it's specifically applicable to, or that the intent was not to make it applicable to the single family residential zone. But I could be mistaken, but that's my understanding.
Are you are you planning on putting any kind of patio on the on the, you know, ground floor?
We have a a deck on the on the first floor. And I'll scroll up to that. We have a deck here at the back of the living space.
But that's actually, that's a a raised deck.
Yes, it's up because the the yard has a great differential from the front to the back. So we wanted to have an easy flow between the inside and outside.
I have a question, if you could scroll back down to the proposed garage.
Sure.
So the garage is entered from the front, right?
Correct.
So in your site plan, you have noted as an asphalt driveway. And then you also have an area off of it to the right, like so for the K turn. My question to you is, is the amount of driveway excessive to do that turn? Or is that really? When you looked at it, when you studied it, is there any extra asphalt driveway that could possibly be removed in the front yard?
No, we're actually well below the permitted front yard impervious. And, you know, this is really the bare minimum. I looked at the turning radius of the car to back out and then to pull out onto the street. So I don't think we are excessive at all. You know, a lot of the turnaround areas that we do for side entry garages in town are much, much bigger than this.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Can I, Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I ask this question, Mr. Miller, for clarification? And getting getting back to the to the roof deck. Does the does the roof deck, and I can't tell from your plan, is is that violative at all of the combined side yard setback?
No, it's all within the conforming side yards.
The the outdoor deck is.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just a question, Mr. Miller, based on what Joy just asked about the parking area. You you you'd said that it's below what is normally the case based on your study. If you were to take a C shaped, which which I I do appreciate you, you have done, you know, pretty thoughtful in terms of keeping it more green rather than, you know, doing the C shaped drive through the front yard. If you were to do that, is this less or more than that? Area?
Significantly less.
Okay. That's what I figured, because it's much lesser in terms of the area that is taken to do the K turn and come out. And then, by the way, I do appreciate because Canoe Brook is a very narrow street and coming backing out for that hundred and ten feet is certainly can be, you know, quite dangerous in terms of, you know, cars moving in and out. So this is pretty thoughtful in terms of being able to move front forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question of this witness?
Actually, one more question, Joe. Going back to going back to Rob's point about the, are you talking about the rooftop deck not being in violation of the side setbacks or just the rear deck? This is from Mr. Miller, if you can clarify.
Oh, yeah, they're both in conformant.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question?
I have a, I have a question, Joe.
Yes.
So again, regarding the garage and looking just looking at the diagram we have in in front of us. Could not that garage be, you know, rotated? You know, turned, you know, one turn, forgive me, I'm not using the right vernacular, but one turn clockwise so that it's not front facing. And you could use that little parking area for your K turn.
Where would you enter the garage from? From the side?
Yeah, you would, yeah, perhaps things would have to be shifted somewhat to the right. But it will eliminate all that need for the additional K turn in the front of the property and you could put it on the side of the property. Did you consider something like that?
We did look at it and, you know, the issue is when you have a side entry garage, you know, when we typically design those, we try to keep about twenty seven feet for the driveway and then a five foot buffer as required by the town. So if we did that, you know, currently we're at sixteen, so would be the side of the garage would almost be where the end of the garage is. So we'd have a garage basically in the middle of the property, which I think would be very unattractive and and create a house that's unbalanced. It would look like basically like the garage is in the middle of of the home. And in this instance, I don't think that would be the the right solution. And we looked at all different garage situations. And the reason why the garage is kind of cranked out on that unusual angle is, and I was really trying to design a house that was site specific. You know, this house wouldn't necessarily work on any other property because, you know, this lot is unusually shaped. So, you know, we have the left side of the house paralleling the the side yard lot line. And then the right side paralleling the right side. So it really looks like it fits in to the street, kind of works with the specific property. You know, and kind of pulling off and creating, you know, a garage in the center, I think would, you know, would really decrease the curb appeal of the home. And I think an important aspect of design is creating a house that's, you know, has a nice composition and is as attractive to not only homeowners, but to the to the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just follow up with Mr. Miller on something? Doug, I'm looking at the first page of your your plan, the site plan. Can you can you just, do you show where the conforming combined side yard setback would be, so to speak?
No, actually, I don't have that that line shown. You know, I guess I could supplement the drawing and put it on there. Let me see if I can kind of eyeball it for you. So the existing nonconforming would be, you know, kind of like, like somewhere in this this neighborhood here. You know, so we take the substantial part off the house.
And and what about on if you didn't touch that side, but you touched the other side?
Yeah, it would it would kind of come right through, you know, kind of this area here. So it would be about eight feet narrower, which I think is quite a bit and it would really make that house, you know, very difficult. And and if we took off eight feet width, you know, just think if we took that much area off, we would push that all the way back here, which would push the deck and everything towards the backyard. So we're trying to maximize the width and minimize the depth, because you can see our rear yard is just so so tiny. And there's this, these are two kind of steep slope areas. So we try to stay away from them. So, you know, the really usable area of the backyard is just this kind of small area here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from either board members or members of the public? Is there anyone in the public has a question, Elaine?
I have two members with their hands raised. I'll just ask that Mr. Miller take his stop screen sharing. And I'm going to bring over Bill Cohen.
Mr. Cohen, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I have a question. I live across the street at forty five to New Brook and there's been a lot of discussion about the sensitivity of the house to the neighborhood neighborhood for things like setback and driveways. I guess a question for the board, which is, you know, is there any consideration given to the the style of the house? I mean, you know, this house does not fit in the neighborhood. There's not one single house like it of that style. I would argue within the poet section, but I walk my dog every day. I would say Canoe Brook, Sheridan, Thackeray, Browning, Tennyson, Harvey, Fielding, there's not a house like that. So.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, I'm just gonna interrupt you just for a second, only because the questions for now are either to the applicants or to Mr. Miller, the architect. There'll be definitely time for you to make whatever statements you want to make regarding the application. But right now procedurally, or is that question?
I'll re-ask the question to Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
How much consideration did you give for the style of the house to the neighborhood as you did to the setback and the driveway space?
I actually did take into consideration, you know, there is a modern house right around the corner on White Oak Ridge Road. Almost, you know, one house away from the entrance to Canoe Brook. And and then when you drive around the neighborhood, there is quite an eclectic mix of houses. You know, architecture styles have evolved and continue to evolve over time. You know, the, the original, most simplest houses, you know, the colonials that were built by the first settles, settlers. There's, you know, Dutch Colonials, there's Tudor houses, there's shingle style houses. There's, you know, McMansion style houses. You walk and drive through the poet section and throughout Melbourne and there's all different styles of house, which I think is what makes the town much more beautiful than a lot of other neighborhoods. You know, you, you drive through other communities and they have these developments come in and there's, you know, split level after split level after split level or Cape Cod, Cape Cod. And it's the same house over and over again, just painted a different color. So, you know, by having variety, it makes each individual house that much more attractive to the person who finds it, you know, stylistically appealing. So, you know, just because one person may not like a certain style of architecture, doesn't mean another one won't find it attractive. And, you know, I appreciate your opinion. And, you know, you may not find modern houses attractive, but somebody might look at, you know, the style of house that you have and say, well, that's not what they find attractive. And that's the great thing about life is there's so much variety and so many options. And the reason why I think, you know, Melbourne doesn't have a, a, you know, a style ordinance is because they're trying to preserve the variety and interest within the town.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has a question for the witness? Is there anybody in the audience?
Hold on, hold on. I brought over Regina Truitt, who has a question.
Okay.
Hi, guys. Thanks for your service. I have a question regarding, a couple of questions regarding the proposed rooftop deck. But is there anything that the zoning board could address regarding the privacy? I believe the architect mentioned, and a couple of the members mentioned that the deck will be 30 feet tall. I don't know if that includes the bottom of the deck or the top uppermost portion of the deck, which may be, may exceed 30 feet. Of course, the mathematical laws would tell us all that the higher you are, the further your noise and light will transmit in addition to other concerns such as fire pits and barbecues that may be on that balcony. Is there anything in current zoning that addresses privacy, fire pits, barbecues and similar issues regarding rooftop, this particular type of deck that particularly that tall?
I, I'm going to assume, Ms. Truitt, that that's a question for Mr. Miller because the board can't answer questions, so to speak.
Of course, whoever, thank you. That would be fine.
There's, the rooftop decks are currently permitted under the ordinance and they were permitted when we made this application. You know, we're trying to keep the rooftop deck towards the back of the house to create more privacy from the street. So, you know, the roof deck is in fact conforming. So I'm sure Praveen and Schwetzer will do their best to take into consideration the neighbor's feelings and, you know, situate whatever functions they have on the roof in a way not to negatively impact neighbors.
May I ask another question? Would that be permitted?
Sure.
Thanks. So you had mentioned evergreens. I'm, I'm a pretty avid gardener, but I am unaware of any evergreens that could hide a deck that is 30 plus feet tall. So is there, are there any point to further conceal the rooftop deck? I mean, I know when I got a generator, I had to conceal it in my yard. So I'm wondering if there is any similar plans for that with this deck.
We don't have any plans for rooftop plantings. You know, I think building up more structure on top of the roof, I think would only contribute to the overall mass of the home and the scale. So that's not something that we had proposed. We do have walls around the rooftop deck to shield the furniture and those things from the street. But, you know, I think that, you know, what we're proposing here is consistent with the, the land use regulations.
You had mentioned evergreens, which is why I brought it up. I wasn't particularly saying evergreens on the deck, but around the deck in the yard that would conceal the, the, the view of the occupants on the deck from seeing the neighbors' activities in their yards.
I'd have to take another look at the existing landscaping between the houses and what type of mature trees there and how tall they are.
Okay. And final question. In 2020, there were two children who fell off of a deck in Philadelphia while taking selfies. Are there any plans to make this, this rooftop deck safe for the occupants? Anyone who would be visiting, I'm concerned about safety.
Yeah, the roof deck will have all the guardrails that are required by the building code. The actual rails are set in from the perimeter of the roof line. So, you know, it has another level of protection. It's not a sheer drop right off the house.
And will those, will those walls have some kind of fireproofing so that if there are barbecues or fire pits, the embers won't?
I don't think my client is, you know, considered fire pits or barbecues. They have their barbecue down on the ground level because that's where they plan to do grilling. So I don't think there's any consideration for, you know, fire pit or barbecue on the roof.
But there's no current zoning, I guess prohibiting that, correct? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I think we are at the point now where we can turn to statements. Not questions now, these are statements. Members of the public, anyone have a statement here she would like to make? Eileen, is there anybody whose hand is up?
No.
Board members, comments? Discussion?
Joe, it, it appeared the first questioner wanted to make a statement. Is that, is that not the case?
Right now, he rose, he raised his hand. Hold on. Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I, yeah, I thought I made my statement pretty clearly. So.
Well, hold on, hold on a second, Mr. Cohen. We need to see your face and we need to swear you in if you're going to provide testimony. There you go. Eric, can you swear him in?
Just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's hearing? The truth holds true by the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
William Cohen, 45 to New Brook Road. So the statement I would make is I just, from a personal perspective, I don't think the house, the design of the house in deference to Mr. Miller's statement fits within the neighborhood. He picked one house that's on, not within the poet section. And I defy you to find one in the poet section like this. It, you know, and a lot of deference has been made to reference to the community and to finding, you know, being sensitive to the neighborhood around a lot of considerations, but design. So, you know, I, that's my objection. But I'm not sure if that matters. But, you know, that's, that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Do you want to ask if Ms. Truitt wants to make a statement?
We lose, Joe?
Yeah, we may have.
No. No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you. I asked all my questions. I appreciate the answering.
Eileen, is Joe trying to come back in?
I don't see him yet.
I see him. There we are.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm back. I lost power for a couple of minutes. Am I speaking?
We can hear you, Joe.
Okay. I lost power for a couple of minutes. And I think that as a consequence, I'm going to have to recuse. I know a member of the public was speaking and I didn't hear that member at all. So I'm going to ask now if there's a motion. Is there a comment or there are comments from board?
So, so Joe, if you're not going to, if you're not going to participate, I think Vice Chairwoman Glat would then take over the proceeding.
Um, are there any comments from board members?
I'll go first. So we have a lot here. This 30% over the zone requirement. And I'm just not buying the hardship. We have a situation here with front yard setback. This, this house could be pushed back further. That's not an issue there with the size of this lot. Side yard combined could easily, we're building a brand new house, that easy could be accommodated. And the location of the parking, I think, is once again, a manufactured hardship is based on where the garage wants to be placed. I won't comment on the aesthetic of the house as that's outside our purview. But I am also concerned about the privacy level for the neighbors. But that being said, I would not support this application.
Thanks, Craig.
So I, I'm going to agree with, with Craig. There's, there's several issues. I, I always struggle a little bit with new construction. You know, even though it's clearly an end of an era for that section of town, right? That's the last kind of split level from that era. And you look around and you look at what that house is surrounded by. And so it's not surprising that the applicants want to, you know, modernize the home. So that's, of course, more than reasonable. But of course, anytime you're, it's brand new construction and as, as Craig, you know, defined it as sort of manufactured hardships, that, that's what's really driving the need for these variances. So I think with, with perhaps a more thoughtful design, some of these variants could certainly be eliminated.
Can I hear from some other board members, please?
I would agree with both of Mr. Plattner and Mr. Toder and their comments. And specifically thinking about the, you know, the front yard setback, that it is closer, you know, to the street than other houses on this, you know, is close to the street than other houses in the neighborhood. And especially given that the design is, is rather striking and I actually like it. But it's still, you know, when it's that close to the street, it really risks sticking out even more. And, you know, I'm not sure that's totally in character with, with it, with that neighborhood.
Thanks. I, I, I just want to agree as well. And I, I know it's not in our right or to talk about aesthetics, but I, I think it is in our right to talk about streetscape. And in so many ways, I think this house as currently designed would not at all fit into the current streetscape.
Anyone else? I, I'd just like to add that I would, I would agree with all of my fellow board members who've talked before me. I, I think that I think I see a question from Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I was just wondering in light of the feedback from the board, if we could, you know, pull the application for tonight, address some of the concerns that were raised and then come back next month with some alterations.
Eileen, is there a date that we can?
Not in January.
And any plans would have to be submitted at least 10 days prior to the hearing anyway.
What if we remove the roof deck, would that have any sway over the board and their feeling of the overall application?
And, and Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
I, I just want to be careful that we're not getting into a territory where you're asking the board for advisory opinions because you certainly would never, ever do that. I would know. So, you know, that being said, I think Ms. David right now is, you know, you're, you're asking if the application based on the comments of the board members can be carried to another date. And so let's see what Ms. David has. And, and if, if it's a little difficult, we could always carry it to any date, even just for purposes of scheduling.
Um, yeah, I'm trying to.
Eileen, would it be easier to carry this application to the January 10th meeting for scheduling purposes? So you'd have an opportunity to figure out sort of what the calendar looks like for 2022 in January, February?
Yeah, I did have that here. We could carry it to this, to January 10th meeting with the provision that, hey, let's carry to January 10th. If, if the, if the agenda is relatively open, we can hear them on the 10th. If it becomes a case where I have too many applications or we can certainly carry them at that point to, because I don't have any other dates other than January 10th. Currently, we haven't adopted the calendar yet. So we could certainly carry it to January 10th for the sake of hearing it. If I could get plans by, well, next week, because that would be the 10 day. I would need them by, by next week. I don't know if that would be feasible for Mr. Miller.
I guess we could try for the 10th and I guess if, you know, for some reason my clients and I can't rework the plan by then, I guess we could always ask to have it continued. Is that possible?
Yeah, we would have dates at that time because that's about the calendar. Do you want to do that? Would that be?
Yes, please.
I guess.
Okay, so the application then would be, is going to be carried with no further notice being required of the applicant to the board's January 10th, 2022 meeting, which will be a Zoom meeting that will commence at seven o'clock PM. And the applicant is aware that should it, should they wish to proceed on January 10th, they would need to submit any revised plans, should they desire to revise plans, of course, at least 10 days prior to that hearing date. And keeping in mind the holiday, of course.
Rob, do, do revised plans require renotice?
No. So, so the, the issue, the only time the revised plans, presumably the revised plans would improve the condition for which variance relief is required. So there'd be no need to renotice. The only time that renotice would be necessary would be if by, by virtue of the revised plans, the applicant is now requiring more variance relief. But I would be surprised if that was the case. Good?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to unilaterally ask the board for permission now for a seven minute intermission. Seven minutes.
Sounds good. So, so we're, we're coming back at.
We're coming back in seven minutes.
Okay. Time noted at 8:52.
Thank you. Thank you.
You okay?
Yeah.
You have a lot more to do?
Yeah, we got three more cases. Can you hear me?
Yep, perfect.
Okay. So we.
Hey, Joe, what, what, when we get everyone back on screen, um, we should have Eileen take a roll call.
Yeah, good idea. So we took a seven minute break at eight fifty-two, right?
Yes.
Are we all back?
Don't touch anything.
I think we're just waiting for Steve and Shandra.
Here, Steve.
Eileen, I don't see Sean Drew back.
I don't see him here.
I, I suggest, why don't you just take a roll call of those members who are present? And then once Shandrew comes back, we can acknowledge his presence. Now there he is.
There he is.
Craig Plattner.
Here.
Joyce Segal.
Here.
Dave Togar.
Here.
Will Bankett Torres.
Here.
Shandrew Hordani.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad.
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg.
Here. Right, the next case is Jeffrey Rosen. The address is twenty-one Dryden Terrace. He's appearing on behalf of Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen is the, uh, uh, do you have anyone, any experts?
Mitch Keller is here.
Yeah, Mr. Keller's coming on.
Okay. Can we get Mr. Keller on here now? There he is.
He's on.
Actually, can we get everybody sworn? Right hand up.
Right hand. Do you swear or from testimony about to give in today's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, done by the truth?
I do. Yes, I do.
Your name is to the record.
My name is Lindsay Rosen, twenty-one Dryden Terrace.
I'm Jeff Rosen at twenty-one Dryden Terrace.
And I am Rich Keller, two fifty-eight Main Street, engineer and planner for the applicant.
Okay. Who's the Cohen side to go first?
Thank, thank you very much. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairwoman, Committee, and, and all the board, we're very thankful for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. And thank you, uh, for your time. I, I am Lindsay Rosen. This is Jeff Rosen. We have been living, uh, in Milburn and Short Hills for about sixteen years. We have three children, sixteen, thirteen, and nine. So we're in each an element, heart, shore, and, uh, MMS and MHS. And we have loved living in this community. We are both from New Jersey and feel very lucky to make this our home for our children. Um, about five years ago, we had the opportunity to move into the poet section from South Mountain. And one of our key criteria was finding a home that had space, uh, for a pool. I, um, am an avid swimmer. I was the captain of my swim team in high school, a lifeguard, um, and I love to swim for, um, exercise. I have a spine issue, so it's hard for me to do anything else. And a pool has really always been our dream for our children, uh, and for our family to enjoy. Uh, and also for, for exercise, of course. Uh, during COVID, we decided to go pool light. And I don't know if some of you had seen our hot tub. It's our COVID hot tub, but we are all about six, my husband and I are six feet tall and over. Our sixteen year old is six-three, so we're too big for a hot tub. Um, and so we were hoping to be able to apply for a pool. Uh, we brought on a pool contractor and then, uh, we're informed that we would be needing a variant. So we were fortunate enough to bring on Rich Keller to support us in this process. We've put together, um, many plans to try and come up, uh, for the most reasonable, uh, plan we can that will, you know, prevent the most number of variances and allow for the most green space. Um, and that's what we bring for you, uh, tonight. And we really appreciate, uh, your consideration. And I wanted to, uh, hand it over to Rich, who can walk you through the technical details. Thank you.
Mr. Keller, proceed.
Why don't we get Mr. Keller qualified briefly?
Yep. Yep. Um, I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed as an engineer since nineteen eighty-nine and as a planner since nineteen ninety. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University with a concentration in water resources and environmental engineering. I also hold a Master's in Architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology with a concentration in urban planning and design, uh, where I was also an, on the adjunct, uh, faculty for approximately eleven years between both undergraduate and graduate. I have appeared before approximately a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey as both planner and engineer. I have appeared before, uh, both, uh, boards here in Milburn, all twenty-three cat, uh, communities in the county. And I have been the engineering consultant, um, to planning boards and boards of adjustment in two communities, Long Hill Township and South Orange. And I've also been the planning consultant, uh, to the Board of Adjustment in Caldwell. I just completed another fourteen hours of education, so my, uh, licenses are on track for renewal and are in good stead.
And the licenses are valid in New Jersey at this time.
They are both valid. That is correct, sir.
Proceed.
Uh, I have actually two exhibits, uh, this evening. So if I can share a screen, I will, um, introduce both of them and then I'll touch base upon them. The, uh, I'm assuming the board can see the applicant, the, uh, the drawing in front of you.
Rich, these are exhibits that have not yet been provided to the board.
That is correct. They have not been. So this would be A one. This is a variance application, twenty-one Dryden, uh, Dryden Terrace. It is the same plan that you have as part of your package, except we've added some supplemental landscaping shown in green and highlighted the existing landscaping to remain in the lighter green. Uh, I'll go over this in more detail. It is dated, uh, with today's date. That is, uh, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. I also have as A two photo exhibit of seven annotated site and neighborhood photos. Um, these photos were taken by myself, uh, last Friday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And I'll go to take the board through them, and they do accurately represent, uh, the site and neighborhood as it exists today. So if we go back to A one and start in the upper right-hand corner, upper left-hand corner, excuse me, um, the property is, uh, located in the poet section of Short Hills, uh, located on the south side. So, so south is to the top of this drawing here, uh, consistent with the survey. Uh, on the south side of Dryden Terrace, approximately midway between White Oak Ridge Road on the left or the east and Addison Drive on the right or to the west. It's about four hundred and fifty feet, um, off of White Oak Ridge Road. When you turn off of White Oak Ridge Road into the poet section on the left side. The property contains, I'll go back to the full drawing, the property contains, uh, fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine square feet. It's about a third of an acre, or just exactly a third of an acre. It's located in the R five residential zone where fourteen thousand, five hundred square feet is required. So it is a conforming lot. I want to just go over to the neighborhood photos, just to walk you through a little bit of the neighborhood. Um, this is A two. If we look at the first photograph, this is the photo of the, uh, dwelling at twenty-one Dryden Terrace PQ, standing for, uh, property in question uh, on the labeling at twenty-one Dryden, looking south from the street with the driveway, uh, to the rear facing garages on the right. So on the right side, there's about a ten foot wide driveway that sneaks into the backyard to a large turnaround area, allowing access to the garage, which sits behind the two windows on the front right facade of the house. I would point out that the front elevation is about a foot, uh, to a foot, three inches higher in the front than in the back of the property. Uh, photograph number two is the adjacent home to the left or to the east of the property, uh, of the subject property. This is seventeen Dryden Terrace. And this shows a, uh, this shows a house with a, uh, permitted front yard facing, uh, garage and a, about an eighteen foot wide driveway in the front. Front-facing drive, garages are permitted, um, but, uh, they are not, they're about fifty-fifty throughout the neighborhood of front-facing versus rear-facing garages. A lot of the newer homes, the new developments, uh, done in the last five years tend to be front-facing, uh, garages. Uh, if we come down the driveway on the right side of the property in question, uh, the Rosen's property, here's the driveway at the rear with the turnaround area. So you come down the driveway, you have to turn around, do a K-turn, and then pull off to the left into the rear-facing garage doors. So it's quite a bit of maneuvering area required to make that turn to get down the driveway and then make a hundred and eighty-degree U-turn into the, into the two-car garage, uh, that faces to the south. We look at the rear of the home, you can see just over the hedges, these are, these, uh, um, skip laurels are to remain, by the way. Uh, you'll see that the, uh, there's the two-car garage that sits, um, with the garage door open, facing that turnaround area. Behind the house, uh, there is a patio, um, and there is a, the hot tub that Lindsay met, uh, referenced before. I would point out, uh, part of the application, um, we, and I, I'll, I'll, I'll give my, uh, some of my points away early. Um, we don't need a coverage variance for accessory use. We're, we're complying, our proposal is compliant with accessory use. And we are fully compliant with rear yard unoccupied. The metric we need a variance from you tonight is for total lot coverage. So in looking at the site, um, the area of the patio behind the family room, um, we're taking most of that away, about two hundred and forty square feet, the existing hot tub. Um, and the patio will be removed, leaving the center section, which will, will just square off, uh, where the dog is. The dog is also to remain, by the way. So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll square that off and cut that patio down to make room for just a, a stepping stone walk out to a pool that would occupy the, uh, uh, the primary, uh, green zone behind the house. If we look at the, uh, looking to the east, this is the rear yard. You can see the full code compliant fence that's behind the existing driveway. Uh, the dog's still in its location, waiting for me to get that ball again. Um, and the, uh, you'll see, we're actually at a little bit of a low point in the backyards where we actually collect water. Um, and we do, we do know that we'll have to do a, uh, township, uh, compliant grading plan to handle all that water, uh, which can easily be done on this property. You'll see the existing, uh, in the back, that's the existing, uh, five-foot fence. And on the right side, is the rear yard is about six foot tall, board-on-board fence. These two fence lines, uh, will be supplemented with, uh, seven to eight-foot evergreens that will show when I go back to A one. Uh, the tree in the foreground, the large tree on the right side that will remain, the only tree that will come down as a function of the application, is the tree that you see about seven feet off the, uh, the property line to the right, about twenty feet off the, off the left property line. That tree is very, will be damaged. Uh, the roots will be damaged by construction, but also be hanging over the pool. So that's the one tree that would be removed. We, of course, if this board were to approve it, we would, we would file a tree replacement plan to conform with the, uh, the tree removal ordinance within the community. There's plenty of room for landscaping. Our proposed landscaping, I'm going to show you, does, uh, meet the requirements of the ordinance. The, um, if I'm now looking at the, towards the south, towards the house immediately to the rear, you can see again on the left side, that's the one tree that's to, to remain. Uh, our pool will be far enough away from the adjoining root structures, and we will not damage any of the adjoining, uh, trees. But, uh, this is the area, uh, behind, so the area where the lounge chair is, that'll be lopped off. That's part of the two hundred and fifty, actually, just to the left edge of the, uh, of the lounge, that'll be lopped off. We're going to square that little section off to create a, a functional, usable patio. And then there'll be a stepping stone walk that goes out and attaches to the pool. The, um, the last photo, um, I went and looked over the fence to the, to the, uh, to the left side of the property in the back of this photograph. And, and you can see this is the result of what a backyard looks like when you do not have, um, the rear yard encumbered by a, a rear-facing garage and turnaround. You can see that you're left with much more area to work in. So you're trading off, uh, a larger square footage of coverage in the front yard, going to an eighteen to twenty-foot wide driveway. But you're, you're preserving, uh, much more. but you're, you're preserving much more coverage in the back, or much more area for, for structures in the back. So this is a, this is what an area that, a house that is unencumbered by rear driveway would look like. Those are the seven photographs that I wanted to show. We go back to the, the A1. You can see that what we've done is, again, eliminated the existing spa, the, the area in the sort of dusty rose color. We've eliminated that portion of the patio and spas, about two hundred and forty square feet. We're filling in the little corner of that, that patio and adding just a scooch to it, just to make sure we can get a table and chairs on that, bring the, bring the grill out of the driveway back up onto the patio. The pool equipment would be placed immediately adjacent to the house, as far away from the property lines, adjoining proper lines as we can get it right behind the generator. We have an area that's reserved without damaging any roots, where we can drop a dry well in that would meet the requirements of the grading plan if this board were to approve the application. And again, the style of pool that was chosen is really what, what you've come to know in this town as the Hampton-style pool. In the Hamptons, it's a style, and in Short Hills, it's a way of saving coverage. So what we have is, we have no walkway or patio around three sides of the pool. There is a, there is a proposed stepping stone walk that goes out so that the, the kids can walk across a hard surface into the shallow end of the pool. By the way, these, these stairs would probably not be in that configuration. Part of Lindsay's purpose for having a pool is, is to be able to do laps. So it's a safe place for the kids to play, play in a pool. Certainly during these COVID times, I think we're seeing a lot of pool applications. It's not uncommon, but the stairs would not be fully across, or there wouldn't be a sun shelf, because Lindsay's purpose is to, is to do laps across that pool. So we did, we did add in, I believe it was a, let's see, it was a sixty-four-square-foot stepping stone walkway that comes out to access the shallow end of the pool. And that's just so that there's a, a safe space for the kids to walk out and not get grasses that are in the pool. That was elective. We thought it was a safety issue. And then we also went with a safety issue of adding on the left side or the east side of the pool, we've added a, I believe it's a forty-two-and-a-half-square-foot automatic closure, so that when the pool is not in use, the pool can be automatically closed off for security, even though there is a, a fence around the entire property. It's really meant for the, the safety of any children that are over at the property playing. Once they're inside there, if the pool's not being attended by Lindsay or, or Jeff, the pool can be closed off and, and becomes a safe space. The 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 pool was sized down. It's not the usual twenty-by-forty that we often deal with, or twenty-five-by-fifty foot that we often deal with in town. And part of the reason is because anything less, and it's really difficult to do laps in the pool. You do, you do your kick turn, you, you come out of the water, and you've got three strokes before you're turning around again. So it was important to go with a pool that was thirty-six feet in length. We did size it down, but again, as indicated, I'll get to a second. We are not over on accessory coverage, and we are not under on rear yard unoccupied requirements. So to reiterate, the existing six hundred and sixty-seven-square-foot patio is being reconfigured, lopped off, and replaced with something that's four hundred and thirty-six square feet. And we did elect to add both the walkway and the automatic closure, which we recognized did have some coverage, we think it makes for safer conditions. Go over the variances briefly. You can see in the upper right-hand corner that I can't slide it, let me get rid of my I've got the board on top of it. There we go. So again, fully compliant lot area, building coverage, we're under. It's only over on lot coverage, and I'll come back to the specific metrics. But we are meeting the accessory side yard setback of fifteen-point-six feet. For me, in the rear yard setback of twelve feet. Actually, I believe that we modified that, so that's actually now twelve and twelve. This is actually the third, the, the set that you were submitted was actually the third iteration of our submission to the town. We had a larger pool, a different location, turned forty-five to forty, turned ninety degrees. So that fifteen-point-six is vestigial from earlier, but we're proposing at twelve and twelve, which are fully the maximum accessory coverage. Twenty percent is permitted. We're going from just under ten percent up to nineteen-point-nine-three, again, fully conforming as to accessory coverage. And the minimum rear unoccupied, twenty-five percent is required. We're still at twenty-six-point-one, so it's not an over-intensification of the coverage or the, or the accessory use in the rear yard. As part of the application, again, we're over by a net of eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet. I would point out that we started the property, before we even started reducing, we were already over the thirty-six-point-two percent, and that's largely driven, or pretty much all driven by the, the driveway. The, the driveway, as I'll indicate, the driveway itself represents one thousand and sixty-eight square feet of coverage behind the house. That's the part behind the house is over a thousand square feet, and the total driveway is, is over eighteen hundred square feet in total area. That represents twelve-point-four percent of the total lot area, which means that more than one-third of the allowable lot coverage is consumed by the driveway alone. The large driveway results in an ex, an existing lot coverage that already exceeds the allowable thirty-five percent coverage by a hundred and seventy-eight square feet. If we did not have that driveway, if we had a, if we could, then there are a number of reasons why it's not really feasible. Elevations, tree removal, mostly the elevations of the property, the slant of the slab. It's not really feasible to get those doors to face the front. But if we had a, a twenty-foot-wide driveway that came into the front of the house, and we eliminated all that pavement, we'd be fully compliant with the coverage as well. Instead of, instead of having cars discreetly in the back and then hidden by existing landscaping in the back, we could have anywhere between six and eight cars parked in the driveway in front. Logistically, the grades don't warrant it, because the back of the house is lower than the front, and I don't have the ability to get doors in that would, that would be able to operate. And if I lower this area, I'm going to be trapping water against the house. So there's a whole bunch of functional reasons why it's not feasible to face the, to, to reorient the garage and remove that pavement, but also I think it would be more disruptive of the neighborhood to do that. I'd have to take down a street tree. I would, and again, I'd have a situation where I could have up to a twenty-foot-wide driveway and be fully conformant, which is not completely atypical in the neighborhood, but I think would certainly be more disruptive of the existing character of the neighborhood. So with regard to the variance proofs, we think it can be approved under both C1 and C2. C1 being the hardship case, and, and hardship, we know that not having a pool is not a hardship, but we're talking about hardship in terms of planning terms. Is there some physical feature or some existing structure on the property that creates a hardship when trying to add reasonable accessories to this property without the need for variance relief? And then there's also the C, the flexible C2, which essentially is, is this represent a better planning alternative than a fully conforming one? And we think that it certainly meets both the C1 and C2 criteria. With regard to the the C1 criteria, in this specific case, it's applicable where the location and configuration of the lawfully existing structures on the property result in a practical difficulty in even nominally adding an accessory structure to the property without the need for variance relief. And I would point out, this section of the, of the C1 proof was added to the municipal land use law in nineteen eighty-five in the recognition that a hardship can not only be created by the physical characteristics of the land, but that it can also be the, by reason of existence of a structure already located on it. You heard in an earlier case tonight, reference to a Lang case. That was a nineteen ninety-nine case, Lang versus zoning board of adjustment. It was actually in North Caldwell. And that case specifically cited that an existing paved driveway and garage can create such a hardship. So it wasn't completely analogous, but that case clearly variances were created by the location of the existing paved driveway and garage, which I think is exactly what we have here today. Again, more than one-third of the allowable lot coverage, if more than one-third of the available lot coverage wasn't already taken up by driveway and required rear turnaround, the proposed pool would be fully compliant. I won't go into the full C2, but I'm happy to if the board would like. I think it actually stands well on the C1 criteria. The negative criteria for both prongs, and I've actually gotten to it. I've, I've gotten a little to the, to the C2 before, and that, I think that it'd be more disruptive of the neighborhood and, and not really structurally feasible to orient those, those garage doors to the front, which would be conforming. I think it'd be more disruptive to the neighborhood. I think it would be, I think this is a better, a better application is to leave the garage in the back and work around it. Any excess coverage can clearly be handled, or the, any possible detrimental effects of excess coverage can be handled by a properly sized and located dry well system on the property. So with regard to the negative criteria, that's, of course, in two prongs. The first is that there's no substantial detriment to the public good as a result of the application. And the second is that there's, will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We believe that there is no detriment to the public good. The project does not have any adverse impacts in the neighborhood. The pool and equipment cannot be seen from Dryden Terrace. The pool equipment is tucked into the house near the existing generator as far from the rear and side property lines as possible. The existing board-on-board fence, along with the existing and proposed trees and landscaping, will limit views to the neighbors. Stormwater management is required by ordinance to ensure that there's no adverse impacts created by the increasing coverage and the variance relief sought. The rear yard has ample space to install a subsurface detention recharge tank to meet the requirements of the ordinance. And just to get into the, the specifics of the trees we're planting, where, now there is an existing fence back there, which provides good screening. It is board-on-board, so you do get some angled views through it. What the applicant is proposing is similar to what the applicant has on the left side, is the placement of, of seven-to-eight-foot evergreen trees. Typical, they would probably be green giant arborvitae's or something similar. Believe it or not, supply chain issues, even in the landscape, make it difficult to know what will be available. Hopefully come spring, when this is under construction, if the board were to approve it. But it'll be something similar, planted at seven-to-eight feet, that will grow much taller, can be maintained fairly columnar and vertical, so it won't approach on the pool. And we're showing thirteen trees, because we think that's what can reasonably fit into the root structures of the adjoining trees. The twenty-four inches far enough on the, on the neighbor's property, back where I've got the twenty-six and twenty-nine combined tree, we're giving that a little clearance and planting three on the right of that. You've got three, six, nine to the left of that, and two infilling between the existing trees. And then there are some existing evergreen trees also on the neighbor's property to the left. So the proposed landscaping certainly supplements the existing fencing, limits, cuts down on a possible views into the neighbors. Once those, once those evergreens achieve more maturity in two to three years, they will start to block out any views even from the second floors of the houses, the house to behind of people using the pool. Probably not, probably they'll always be able to see the back patio, but because of perspective, the pool will not be seen. So the, we think that there is really no negative impact on the neighborhood. There's no detriment to the master plan. Under the master plan goals and objectives of the master plan reexamination of two thousand and nineteen, objective number one point oh one is to protect the character of existing residential neighborhoods and incurring land and encourage land uses and development at an appropriate scale and density. Pools are permitted accessory uses within the community. The area of the accessory uses are consistent with the size of the lot, and they are fully permitted by ordinance. The lot is fully compliant with the, except the, the proposed pool is fully compliant with the accessory setbacks, although the entire property is fully compliant with accessory setbacks, accessory coverage, and rear yard unoccupied. In my professional opinion, I think we meet the proofs of the C1 and C2 variance. This application will neither cause a substantial detriment to the public good nor a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the master plan. We're certain, I'm certainly happy to take any questions. We think it's a good application, and we think that we respectfully request the board to approve it.
Are there any questions from board members of this witness? Or of any of the witnesses?
Mr. Keller, I'm just going to ask that you provide the exhibits that you presented this evening to both Ms. Davit and myself, please.
Is there anyone in the public who has any questions of, of any of the witnesses?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the public who has a comment they would like to make with respect to this application?
None.
Board members, let me hear your comments on this application.
I, I think this is a very well-thought-out plan, given the constraints that we're working with, and I would be happy to support it.
I would agree with Jessica. I think the C1 and C2 requirements are both met. I also like the fact that Mr. Keller actually used Lang case correctly, as most planners do not. The Calabrese house did have a very unusual driveway situation. Even though it wasn't undersized lot in R2, where this is a conforming lot, this driveway definitely does pose an issue. And I like the fact that they kept the drive, that the garage is facing rearward. It does add, I think, a little bit nicer to the streetscape rather than putting drive with garages in the front. So that being said, I would absolutely be happy to grant this variance relief.
And I would just add that it, this, the stuff on this here and the, you know, removal of the hot tub and some of the other deck to accommodate, you know, and, and mitigate variances to some degree, so I, I can support the application.
I, I would support all that my co-members have mentioned, and I think I could be supportive of this application as well.
Is there anyone else? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I mean.
Craig Plentner.
Yes.
Joy Siegel.
Yes.
Steve Togern.
Yes.
Wolfgang Tatorres.
Yes.
Shadrew Hordani.
Yes.
Jessica Glat.
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg.
Yes. Two more applications.
Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Happy holidays. The next matter is the Grossman matter at Thirty-Two Haddonfield Road.
Um.
Are there witnesses here?
Grossman is John James. Um. I see Mary Donson with her hand up. I don't know if she's affiliated with this. I will bring her over and let me hear what she has to say.
Yeah, let's see.
Hi, this is Mary and Paul. Can you see us?
This week.
Yeah. Hey, we're so sorry. Our architect is John James. He lost power, and he's rejoining as soon as he can. I would say in about five minutes, he's going from one location to another. Would you like us to start by introducing ourselves and giving a little background?
I think that it might be more useful for us to take the other matter that's on the agenda. Let's see if all the witnesses are here on the Smith matter.
Okay, that's fine. We will, we will wait, and we can go after them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm calling now the Smith matter at Sixty Milton Street. Is there anyone here on that?
I'm getting them, Joe. Give me, give me a chance. I gotta get him over there.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Tim Classy and Joseph Smith. My team, Chris, there we go.
Hello.
Hi.
Great, thank you. This is Gina Smith, my husband, Joseph Smith.
Let's get the witnesses sworn in, please.
Okay, we, we're waiting on Tim Classy. We need his video. We need him on mute.
Eileen?
Yes.
Hi. I don't know why my video isn't working.
Are you there?
Yes.
Go down to the bottom left.
I got it. Thank you, Eileen. You're the best. I got it. I got it. Thank you.
Okay, if you guys would just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, whole truth, not above the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Please state your names for the record, please.
Gina Smith.
Joseph Smith, 60 Milton Street.
Timothy Klessy.
Does the Smiths want to lead off?
Sure, thank you. We'd like to start by thanking the board for hearing our application this evening. We reside at 60 Milton Street in Milburn. We've been residents of the community for over 15 years. We have two children, one in the Washington School and the other in the Milburn School. Oh, the middle school, sorry. We are submitting an application to rebuild our garage. Our structure is about 100 years old. And we'd like to make it a safe environment. We are using the existing foundation. We're not making it bigger. We are keeping the dimensions the same. And then we'd like to put a room on top of the garage. With COVID, both my husband and I have not been in the office as much. And our house conditions with working from home make it a bit difficult for us to be able to work quietly. So we're looking for a place that would allow us to be able to work in a quiet environment. Tim can explain the particulars about what we're about to do if approved. Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Can I ask a question of the Smiths?
Yeah.
So in looking at the garage, it, at least it appears to me to be a very sturdy structure. I mean, I mean, it's very sound. I didn't see any rot. Right? It's, it's in good shape. The garage is in really good shape, right? Would you agree with that?
It's very old, but yeah, we obviously maintained it as we tried to maintain our entire properties, right? And it was recently refurbished, I guess, and painted.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it looks, it is in not bad shape, but it's fragile.
Okay.
And, you know, basically, yeah, it's old.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Klessy?
Yes.
Proceed. Give us the benefit of your experience and your qualifications, please.
I am a degreed and licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and New York and been licensed for approximately 25 years. My have appeared in front of this board on numerous occasions and in front of other boards around the state and tri-state area, and my license is in good standing.
Which states are you licensed in?
New York and New Jersey.
Any other questions from board members regarding the qualifications of this witness? If not, your qualifications are accepted as a, an architect.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to share my screen.
Please do.
I'm just gonna start with my drawings, which are exactly the same as the drawings that you have. Now, I'd like to say that if my drawings would open. Oh, there we go. Okay. I'm gonna start my my BOA one sheet is exactly the same as your sheet. And if I, where I put the cursor now is Milton Street. And from Milton Street, really from the curb line to the face of my building is about 100 feet. And it's downhill. So the garage that we're speaking about tonight it really appears to be smaller than normal from the street. Our intent is to remove the existing garage and then to build a new garage into add a second floor on top of the garage, which we would use as a sort of makeshift office space. So the problem that we have is that the existing garage is about five feet off of the rear property line. And since it's now moving from a garage to really an accessory structure, it's required to be 12. And then the other issue is I wanted to raise the ridge up to 20 feet. Whereas 18 is all that's allowed for an accessory building. And I wanted to do that so I could get a more habitable second floor out of this building. So those are the two variances that we're seeking tonight. I'm now going to my BOA. Well, two sheet, I was gonna say, and really I'll zoom in a little for you. The, the lower floor, all we've done is left the existing footprint, demolished the garage, and then built a new garage in the same area as was existing and added this stairway to access up to the second floor. The footprint of the garage is the same as it now is. Up on the second floor, it'll allow me to come up the stairway, walk into a door and produce really a small office up in the dormers for really for Gina. The I'll go, I think I had a, oh, just a roof plan, nothing really. I'm gonna just move you to the elevations just to get a sense of what we did here is started from the driveway side. The two car garage, right? Same with as it was with the stairway added to access into the second floor space. And then I dormered the front and the rear of the building. If I look here, you can see that the maximum allowable height for the garage is 18 feet and it's 18 feet above what's called the average grade. And in this case, the average grade is about a foot lower than the grade at the front doors of the garage because the garage actually drops off about two feet as I go along the side of the elevation. You can kind of see that here how the garage degrade is dropping as we go towards the rear. So when I picked the average grade, my average grade was actually lower than my drive in grade. And we came up and I want to get enough pitch into the roof so that when I dormered the roof, I could show enough of an angle to make it look as a dormer would, not a, not a flat roof. And that's why I raised the building, the additional two feet, which is really sort of visible, visibly a foot from the front. But it's actually two feet in terms of deviation up here at the top. If I, that's my side. I'll go to the other two sides. This is the sort of property side. You walk up the stairs into the garage. I held it very low. The first, the first floor of the garage floor is seven foot 10. The second floor at the end of the dormer is only seven feet high. And then I let it ride up to the nine foot point so that I could get a pitch into that roof and make the roof look reasonable. You see right there is my five foot 10 wall before I go into the dormer. So I've really tried to scale this building into the, into the site. And that's really all I have for my, my drawings. I just wanted you to get a sense that the this is really from about halfway down the driveway. And you can see that I'm still about 55 or 60 feet from the garage and I'm going downhill. So from the street, the garage even looks smaller. Behind me is a commercial district. It has really no or building really would have no impact on them. I come to looking for a picture from the road, but I actually just don't have a full streetscape shot. I show you, but that's the side of the existing garage. And you can see that I have about four feet behind. There's a fence and then a, a medical building is behind us.
Mr. Klessy, let me interrupt you for a second. In terms of these photos, were these submitted with the application?
You know, they, they may, I'm gonna say no. It may be in the back of the application, but I'm not sure.
Okay. And I think that they may not be, at least I think the version I saw may not be color. So can, can we maybe mark these photos as A1?
Yes, I'm sorry. I should have done it in the beginning. I'm sorry. But that is
And these photos were taken fairly recently by you?
I took, I took these photos about two months ago. Maybe a month ago. I see that the leaves are down off the trees.
And how many photos in total? Four?
Yes, four.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna take it to one additional photo, which shows this sort of rear yard area. And you can see that we have a small rear yard and back a six foot fence and then the medical use is behind us. If I'm down in the rear, in the lower corner of the property, I think this would give you a sense of how steep the driveway is as we go down and how high we are up at the streetscape. So the building itself really appears to be de minimis from the road. So the the only other thing that I'd like to just look at one last time is just the site plan because there's a, a small amount of property to the right of the of the garage. It's a little confusing. I just want to make sure that the board understands that the the site itself is actually a, a large lot. It this line is really just the driveway line. We actually own all of this property. My side yard setback here is, I don't know, 40 feet. And I saw your setback on this side is also about, well, it can't be 40, must be 30 and 30 feet because my garage is sitting right in the middle of the property. So it's really has no impact on either of the two neighbors. And then directly behind me is really the medical use. This distance from the face of the garage to really the curb, which is out by the top of the T and street is really about almost 100 feet. I think it's about 90 feet. And it's downhill by approximately 12 feet. So it really allows my garage to look to have very, very little impact on the streetscape itself. Are there any questions?
Questions from board members now, please. I have one question. You keep referring to the building behind you, your client as a medical use. Can you be more specific?
Gina, can you describe exactly what that building is?
I think it's a women's health office. So they do various fertility and all that sort of thing.
At the diamond?
Yes, diamond. That's it. Sorry. Yeah.
Tim, can you take down the chair?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Tim, you're gonna have plumbing in the, in the second floor?
No, no plumbing.
No, no plumbing, no plumbing.
There'll be electrical though, right?
Yes, yes.
With no plumbing?
Yes.
There's, there's already electrical in the car.
It'd be almost, it'd be really difficult to get plumbing out there. It's too low. We couldn't even pitch a waistline, you know? Like it would be really impossible to get plumbing up. Short of going to the medical use, you know?
Questions from board members. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question with respect to this application?
Sorry, Joe, I have another question.
Yes, Steve.
You know, to the Smiths, you, you, it would help us understand a little bit about your house. It would help me anyway. What, what, what does your house look like? How many rooms in your house? Do you have, can you give us an idea how many bedrooms, how many rooms you have in your house?
Sure. So on our second floor, we have three bedrooms. So one for our, you know, one for each of our children and then my husband and I. And then we have a nursery sized office that we're currently using as one of our offices. On our main level, we have a guest bedroom, which is in use by his parents, my parents, when they come to visit. And then we have living room, dining room, kitchen, and then a bathroom. And then in the basement where we are now, currently, this is where my husband works from. So it's a very, very open, no door and tight.
Anything in the attic?
Just storage.
New storage?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Of course.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who has a question?
None.
Anyone in the audience have a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application?
None.
Board members, what say you?
The one more question here before we can go on to comments. For Tim, in terms of square footage about the garage, how much area is that adding up?
325 square feet.
Thank you. Sorry, Wolfgang.
No problem. I just, my comment is that, you know, upon visiting the site and seeing how far below the street level, the you know, and how, how far below the street level, how far back the garage is located. I think it's a pretty easy way of getting some, it's an easy and completely intrusive way of getting an extra functionality out of the garage building. And additionally, that behind is an industrial, you know, right behind it is the industrious, the medical building. And then kitty corner to that is a parking lot. And given the very, you know, the great distance to the side yard setback to the side yard boundaries, I don't see how it really is detrimental in any way to any of the neighbors. So I would, I would, I would support this application.
I agree with Wolfgang. Based on a C two variance, this, this completely complies. We have an accessory structure setback. Obviously, we're not going to move it 12 feet into the middle of the yard. And from accessory height, because of that elevation change from the street to the actual garage, I do not think it'd be intrusive at all. And I would support this application.
Anyone else?
I would support the application as well.
Likewise.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who? I didn't hear who was the second. Was that you, Wolfgang?
Yes, it was me.
Craig Plentner?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Shadrew Hordani?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Let's go back to the case that we, that we skipped. We have witnesses in that Grossman. We have witnesses in that Grossman case.
Yes. I brought John over twice. Hold on. Okay, John should be on his way. Keep bringing John over, but for some reason it's not. There he goes. Okay, he's back. He's in.
Eileen, can you drop Tim?
Yeah, I just put, put him back. So we should have John. There we go.
Here it is. Okay, if everybody would raise their right hands, who's gonna testify? Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight's sum here to be the truth, all true, done by the truth?
I do.
If you just state your names for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Mary Donson.
Paul Grossman.
John James Architect.
The Grossman's gonna testify.
Yes, I will start. Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for your time. I'm Mary Donson. This is my husband, Paul. We live at thirty-two Haddenfield Road. I have lived in town since two thousand and and Paul has lived here for more than twenty years. We bought this house, our current house, in two thousand and five. And we have not materially improved it or made any serious changes to it since we moved in. We live here and we have four kids, all of whom have gone through or are going through the Melbourne School District. And we hired John to make some, what we think are relatively modest improvements to our house. And we've really made it a priority to ensure that those improvements are in keeping with the style of the house and the larger sort of style and atmosphere of the neighborhood. We love the neighborhood. Our, our closest friends live here, as do our children's closest friends. And what we've asked John to do is find a way to somewhat improve, modernize, and slightly enlarge our kitchen, and also give us a mudroom and a true family room. And we will turn it over to John unless my husband has something to add. Because of course, the trick was figuring out where and how to do that. And I understand we need a minor variance based on where our house is, is placed and what we want to do. Paul, anything to add? Okay, thank you all very much. And I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening. My call first, or?
John, you want to provide the bores and qualifications?
Sure. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Let me just turn this up. Is that better? In New York, New Jersey, and Connecticut, I have a Bachelor of Architecture from University of Virginia, a Master of Architecture from Columbia University. I've been a principal and John James Architect for the past twenty-seven years. I've testified before numerous boards in New Jersey, probably fifty or sixty ones, and on numerous occasions to the zoning board in Melbourne here as well. All of my licenses are up to date and active. Thank you.
Your qualifications are acceptable to the board as an architect.
Thank you. I'm going to want to share my screen here. And let me just everyone, is this okay? Is that okay for everybody?
It's good.
Okay, great. So the Grossmans want to renovate their and expand their kitchen, add a new mudroom, and improve their existing family room, all within the confines of their existing house. And in order to do this, we seek to construct a one-car detached garage at the back corner of the property. The issue here is that you can see from the site plan that their house, as opposed to being a traditional house that may be not so deep and narrow and wide across the front, is narrow across the front, is very deep. So the house is at the very minimal rear yard setback that's allowed in the zone. But it's undersized for what's known as the rear yard unoccupied. So in this case, we're supposed to have a rear yard unoccupied area of two thousand square feet. And their existing rear yard without any structures is at sixteen forty-six square feet. So we have an existing non-conforming condition here. And it's really because of the shape of the house on the property. So in seeking to develop their new construction, we have a kitchen located here in the middle of the house that we're going to expand. Predominantly, all of these renovations are within the existing footprint of the house. As you can see, the open line around the entire perimeter of the house, and you see some changes in window openings and bay openings. But otherwise, we're doing predominantly an interior renovation. We're adding twelve and a half square feet with a bump-out bay with French doors and windows facing their existing patio. And we're adding eight square feet for in the existing garage to turn that into a family room. What we're doing is we're taking the kitchen, opening it up to what was the previous family room, which really served as a mudroom, and making that a bona fide mudroom. Expand the kitchen slightly. The mudroom is here in the middle. And we're taking over the garage as the current family room, and proposing to build a new freestanding garage in the rear yard here at the corner of the property. It's set the minimum required three foot from each of the property lines, both the side and the back. And it's located at the end of their driveway here. And it will provide a slightly larger space for parking a car. Their current garage is about eleven by nineteen, and the new garage is going to be fifteen by twenty. So it's a minimal one-car garage where we could put a two-car, but we have an existing one-car. That's what fits more appropriately on the property. And we are going to need a variance for putting this structure in the existing rear yard because of the rear yard unoccupied. If I go back to the site plan, just so that you can see this a little more clearly, you can see here we've noted where the rear yard is. The required area is two thousand square feet. We have sixteen hundred and forty-six. And we're locating our garage here in the corner, the three feet from the side in the rear yards. And so one variance is for putting a accessory structure in the rear yard that decreases the unoccupied space. And that's being decreased. It is currently required to be twenty-five percent. The current existing non-conforming condition is the twenty-point-six percent. And we're proposing to reduce this by another three-point-two percent. So the total variance required would be seven-point-six percent. So that's the first variance we're seeking. The second variance is that a portion of the garage here below this dotted line extends into the side yard of a property. And the garage is supposed to be attached to the structure or located in the rear yard only. At this point, because there's such a minimal rear yard, we're not able to put a minimal-depth garage within that rear yard. So we're extending into the side yard approximately three to four feet. It's on a slight angle, but it's less than four feet maximum into that side yard area. You can see from the structure we're proposing that we're doing a Tudor-style garage. It's very minimal in appearance. It's fifteen feet wide. It's sixteen feet high. We're allowed to go eighteen feet high. We chose to make it lower sloped. This garage, if you look at some of the drawings for the house, this is the existing study at the front of the house. You can see kind of the triangular gable and the timbering that we have there. And we've chosen to mimic the house exactly in the garage with the same triangular gable, the same timbering with the carriage-style doors. And we're gonna carry that same timbering on the other walls of the garage. So it'll look like it was the original garage for the property. When you look at what we're doing to the house, we're maintaining that existing structure of the house. We're adding new French doors with a small hood roof here right off the kitchen that connects to their existing raised patio. We're reducing the size of that raised patio slightly so that we can put a direct connection on grade into the house to create this small mudroom that's between the kitchen and the family room. The main thing that improves this house extremely in this case and really generated this design is that the previous garage was here at the back of the house and totally blocked all of the other rooms' views of the backyard. At this point, we've been able to open the center of the dining room, open the center of the kitchen, mudroom, and put new windows in the back wall of the garage. So there will now be light, air, and views all the way through the house. And they can actually enjoy the views of their backyard where that was previously blocked by the existing garage. So this seemed like a no-brainer to us in terms of moving the garage out here and putting the family room right here where it should be located near the kitchen and near the access into the house here. Again, you can see how we did the new doors on the side, the new entry door for the mudroom, and the old garage door became the new bay window for the garage itself. On the back of the house here, you can see these, the two new windows that were added for the garage at this point here. And then the front of the house remains unchanged. And the other side of the house remains unchanged. We're really working on kind of the driveway side of the house here for the property. I would like to say that even though we require a variance for putting the one-car garage in the backyard because it's undersized relative to the, the code for garage or accessory structures in the backyard, the maximum allowed is twenty percent of the backyard. And we are well under that. That would be three hundred and ninety-two square feet. And we're at two-thirds of what's allowed to be in the backyard. We're only at two hundred and forty-eight square feet. So by one metric, the backyard is undersized and you don't have enough vacant space on the property. Of course, if you look at the property, it has a lot of space here at the corner and it turns on the side. This is by no means a house on steroids. We are well under the building coverage. We're well under the lot coverage. And we're almost ten percent under the FAR for the house. So it is minimally sized and it works with the existing conditions in the hand that we're dealt with here in terms of renovating. So we're trying to keep the existing rooms where they are, give them better look orientations out to the yard, and create a minimal new structure here. It's really in the corner of the property, it's set back as far as possible from our house and from adjacent neighbors' houses being at the corner of the property. It's a very standard condition in the R6 zoning. And by keeping it smaller and in keeping with the rest of the house, it's going to fit uniquely with this Tudor-style house in this historic neighborhood. So those are the two variances. That's kind of our proposal. I have existing conditions drawings if the board wants to see them. But in terms of your time constraints tonight, I thought I would try to speed this up and get you on your way so you can do your other discussions. Are there any questions about this?
I have a question.
Certainly.
What effect does that new structure have on the neighbors?
Um, it's a very minimal effect because it's located in the corner of the property. There is existing screening on the side and behind it. We submitted some pictures in our application to the board that shows the view of the driveway, which was picture number one. Picture number two showed screening on the left-side driveway along it. Picture number two showed the corner condition with screening on the left-hand side neighbor and behind the garage. And picture number three kind of showed the tightness and the hardship of actually ever even using this existing garage of pulling in and backing out. It's a very difficult condition. It's a garage they haven't parked in for the entire time they've been there. And we're trying to create a situation that improves that and improves the character of the house. So I think by all standards, it's a minimal addition within the neighborhood. It certainly doesn't cause any detriment to the public good or or any impairment of the intent of the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance. It is very consistent with the established character of the neighborhood, having a kitchen, a mudroom, and a family room in a house like this. It conforms to all of the other regulations except for the rear yard unoccupied and for a minimal portion in the side yard. And that's really due to the existing hardships of the placement of the house on the property. So, you know, kind of based on that, we're asking you to consider approving this proposal for the Grossmans.
Any other questions from board members? Any questions from members of the audience? Anyone, Eileen?
No.
Are there any comments from members of the audience?
No hands.
Board members, let me hear from you.
Oh, I could strongly support this application. I think it's very well done. I think the idea of doing a separate structure for the garage actually is a great idea. If it was a regular addition, I think the house would become too massive for the site. So I, I think it's extremely well done.
Anyone else?
I agree with you. I'm sorry, I can't see. Could you stop screen sharing, John, quick?
Here we are.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who was talking, so. Anyway, I, I support, I support this application. I think as a C1 variance, I agree with the hardships. Even from a C2 perspective, the lot can certainly take the massing. It's certainly not detrimental to the zoning plan. I think it's a thoughtful use of space. It's a great way to repurpose a garage. Add another garage and it's still, it's still well within character of, of the home, the neighborhood, and the surrounding area. So I think that it would it'd be a nice way to repurpose some space. And I think I would definitely support this application.
I agree with the board members that have previously spoken. And so it does seem that with respect to the C1 variance, that were this house to be wider and the, the rear of it to be pulled up, then you probably wouldn't have this, this issue. The one thing I, that does cross my mind, though, is looking at the property and looking at these pictures, you know, the screening behind the garage is really, I believe, to my, to my recollection, is a lot thinner than what looks, what it looks to be here. So that would be the one comment I have on, on that aspect.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Wolfgang. I think the screening around the outside perimeter of the garage where along the property lines could definitely be improved. And I would like to see that as a condition of approval. Along the property lines could definitely be improved and I would like to see that as a condition of approval.
How specific would you get Steve?
I'm, I'm not really certain, but I mean, there, there seems to be very little screening right now.
How, how far is that off the property line? That garage, John, how far is that?
Three feet off the property line.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what you can plant in there that's going to survive at only three feet. This can be large enough to cover any, you know, a structure that that's tall. That's like no room to grow.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. I mean, the, the, the diagram shows, it indicates a wood fence back there, but there isn't one, so I don't know. But then again, even if there were a six foot fence, there were five foot fence or whatever, wouldn't, it's not going to block the whole garage, so.
I just, another related observation was if I got, got this right, John, the height is sixteen feet tall, right? For the garage.
Height of the eve is approximately eight feet and then it slopes up to the top of the roof at sixteen. Roof slope of the, of the main house. So it's eight foot at the side, so a six foot fence would cover all but two feet of the wall.
Gotcha, thanks.
You're allowed to do eighteen feet in this zone and we didn't feel like we needed to go taller.
Sure. Thanks.
Curious as to whether somebody wants to make a motion and whether a fence would be part of that most.
I make a motion as it's submitted.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ray Clotner?
Yes.
Joy Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Shadu Hordani?
Yes.
Jessica Black?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I think that takes care of our business for the evening.
Hey Joe, Joe, can I just make a comment that I neglected to mention at the beginning of the hearing?
Yes.
So, um, and let's get the gross, the applicant and the architect. Out before I.
Thank you all very much for your time, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, so just real, real brief. As this board is aware, we had the Bucone South application number of months ago, which resulted in denial of that application. The applicant has filed an appeal of that determination and has also filed what's called an order to show cause. Also naming the township of Melbourne. And requesting in part that they be allowed to stay open during the pendency of the litigation. And that order to show cause has a return date of mid-January. And I am in the process of putting together some papers with regard to the order to show cause, although. The crux of it will fall on the township as we are not an enforcement body, we just. You know, here are the applications and approve or deny. And it's just for, as far as our purposes go, it's, it's a prerogative red action, but nevertheless, we were named in this lawsuit. Order show cause, normally I would mention this in executive session. But as Eileen and I know, it's very, very difficult when you're on Zoom to sort of get out of the room, go into a different room, come out of that room, go back in the room. So I, I just felt it important just to notify the board of the, the status of the application. Or the, of the litigation and that the order show causes to be returnable before Judge Moore in Essex County. In mid-January and I'll report more as. The application or the litigation commences and can.
Thank you. Now I said that I wanted to make a few comments. I want to say first of all, I want to talk a little bit about some of the board members. I don't know whether those of you are really aware, certainly not the new board members would be aware. But let me tell you that in most communities, there are three people. Who handle the job that Eileen David does in Melbourne. Secretary of the Planning Board, Secretary of the Zoning Board and the Zoning Officer. Most have, those are three different people. Working full time. Eileen does all three of those jobs. And she does them very well. Jessica Glad. Spends an enormous amount of time on this board. You people don't even know how much time she spends and she has three kids. I've learned growing up, three kids. That that's a job for, that the wife does very well, the husband usually does very badly. And yet she finds time to spend an enormous amount of time on this board. Joy Siegel has been absolutely incredibly useful to this board. I think those of you know that when our attorney draws up his memorializing resolutions. Of which there are as many memorializing resolutions as there are matters that come before this board. Those memorializing resolutions come to Joy Siegel. Who is amazing in terms of the speed with, and the thoroughness. With which she goes through those. Memorializing resolutions, makes comments and sends those comments out. I have barely had time, had time to look at them before I look at my. Laptop and see that she's already been through them all, done the. The work on them. And has sent them back to Rob. And Rob has found them as he's mentioned to me on more than one occasion, particularly useful. Yes, thank you, Rob. Now I want to tell the board members that. There are lots, those of you who are sitting on this board know. The, the inordinate amount of time that it takes to be a good board member. Not only do you spend time at these meetings. But you go out and look at the properties. You review the minutes of the meetings. You review the memorializing resolutions. And all of that takes an enormous amount of time. I think people don't realize how much time and effort goes into being a successful board member. I was talking not long ago to Steve Togger and neither of us could remember when we came on the board. Eileen did some digging around and found out that Steve, you were two thousand and. Nine, ten?
Yeah, two thousand and nine.
Two thousand and nine. I was, believe it or not, two thousand and four. So I've been on this board for seventeen years. And Eileen told me some time ago, maybe a year or two ago. That she was digging through some old stuff and found, she said, you, would you believe that you were chair of this board? In two thousand and nine, right, Eileen? Two thousand and nine. And. I want to tell you all the board members here, my term on this board. My four year term is up at the end of this month. I have no idea whether I will be reappointed to the board. I will tell you this, that if reappointed to the board, I will not be a candidate for chair. I will not accept the position of chair of this board. Time for somebody else to start getting involved and to do that job. I hope that the new board chair is more successful than I've been at one thing. And that is convincing every board member that it is critical to go out and look at the properties. I know that some of you do that, others do not. And I think it is tremendously important. I remember that Jessica and someone else who's no longer on the board. And I looked at a property that it seemed that the. The various that was requested was simple and absolutely. Grantable without a question, except that if you went out and looked at the property. You saw that it endangered the neighbors, a neighbor's trees and bushes. But the, what the applicant wanted to do would be to, was to dig down. And put a foundation in for a building. And we immediately looked at the neighbors bushes and trees. Alongside the property line about four feet away. And it was obvious that the roots of these trees and bushes would be very much affected. So. We raised that issue with the applicants. The applicant sought a. Deferral of their, of the board considering their matter. And moved everything they wanted to do to the center of their property away from the sideline. Now I know that the horror stories that I've told you. About what's happened when people get involved in conversations with. Applicants at these meetings. And I've told, told you ways in which I think it's important for you. To avoid getting involved in conversations with the applicants. But I may have scared you too much. Because I know that there are some people on this board who do not, have not made it a practice. To go out and look at these properties. However, generally speaking, I am tremendously impressed with the intelligence. The confidence, competence of the people on this board. And I would hope that you all stay on the board and continue to do the good work that you're doing. I hope that one of you steps forward and. Takes my job as chair seriously, as seriously as I think I've done it over the last seventeen years. But even if I'm reappointed. I have determined that it is time for me to step down as chair. That's really all I wanted to say to you guys. And I wish, and I think the last thing I want to say. Because you, you guys know me well enough to know that I never know when it's time to stop. But I know now that it's time to stop. If I say one more thing, that is you are extremely lucky to have Rob as your attorney. Very thorough, very knowledgeable. And he, in a very quiet and understated way. Has managed to be a very, very helpful right, right arm for me. So whoever steps up to be the new chair of this board. In the next term, for next year. Is very, very lucky to have Rob as his or her. Right arm. I thank you all for the hard work that you've put in over the years that you've been on this board. And thank you very much for the hard work that I know that every single one of you has put in. So thank you very much. Godspeed.
Thank you, Joe, for all the years of service.
Happy holidays to everybody and. Very Merry Christmas and a happy New Year to everybody.
Yes. See you next year. Good holiday for everyone.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, oh, I wanted to ask if anybody has any matter to bring before the board that is not on the agenda. Eileen has taught me that it's very important to ask that question at the end of, at the end of a meeting. I hear none, I see none, so now I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Happy holidays everyone.
Thanks Joe, good holiday to everyone.
Bye now.